Everyone on Zoom is waiting for the meeting to start. We're just working with our cameras now. We'll be there shortly. Jersey, you're on Zoom. Jersey, we are being talking.
Yes, I can hear you, Jack. Sorry, I could not find my unmute button.
Yeah, I can hear you as well. I got my microphone unmuted. So it's great. I can hear one of you. Yeah.
It is December 6th. This is the regular Grand County Commission meeting. I'm going to call to order President of the Commissioners, Chris McGee, Kevin Walker, Flabber, Sarah Scott, Karen McGann, myself, Kat Adler in the chambers. And Commissioner is Khorash on Zoom. Yeah, Administrator, Natalie Nassau, Assistant Administrator, when the hall and our work is not. All right, I will open the meeting and we will go to our pledge of allegiance. I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to. All right, thanks. Looks like we have a full house and you will get the public comment shortly. I'm sure that's what most folks are here for. Before we do that, I had a statement I wanted to raise to you all. I want to address something that came out of seeing a sticker popping up on stop signs in the area that bothered me. The sticker replaced under the stop signs and stickers read, "Stop renting UTVs, Moab, UCU." If there's someone who is tagging our public signs as street poles, I want to let you know this isn't helping to resolve any issues, but that it's backfiring harmful and creating more tribalism in our community. I understand that the majority of our community would like to see us reduce noise in our neighborhoods, but these stickers are not making it any easier and it's making the conversation more difficult. There's other comments, angry comments on Facebook, evasive statements in public meetings are also non-dupative. We clearly hear the frustration, I promise you, but we're not only moving forward, we're only moving forward on all sides of open and finding solutions. Public ban was in the name of comments, aren't we? I have to pass the board over to Commissioner McGann, who's also on the airport board, which is asked for the statement.
I guess they have the airport, a lot of people spoke and in that conversation, what they said, I'm not surprised that they thought that somehow we were wanting to remember to allow me to fly in that country. That is not at all the case. I had the privilege growing up, my dad would fly from there. He flew all over Grand County, San Juan County, Wyoming, Montana. And he landed at these little airstrips that were in the back country there, mining operations. Those airstrips will remain open. They're historical. There's a lot of them and others continue to create. So the thought that we are keeping people, handicapped people who are able to fly out that land, sort of airstrip, and then the high heights. It's not at all of this for this room or attempting to, if attempting to hit ahead. If we would have known that issues around UTVs and ACDs, we would have done a lot of careful. We can see that there's a lot of more activity in the back country, a lot more airplanes, a lot of.
Types of aircraft and we need to start looking at ways to make sure we don't have the conflicts in the future that we have now. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that. So if your comments were about that we're not allowing you or you can't go in the back country, that is not true. Thank you. I want to turn this back over to Jack.
Thanks, Mary. Again, it does look like we have a lot of people here for public comment. So I'm going to limit comments to two minutes to give everybody a chance to speak. And I wanted to go over rules of decorum. If you submitted a written comment to the commission, we have received it and read it. And if you like, you may give up your time to others who have not submitted a written comment. No one may speak until they have been recognized by myself, the chair. I'd ask you to raise your hand and I will call on you. Please come up to the table and speak into the microphone and begin by stating your full name.
If they give up their time, they don't get extra.
Right, I got a lot of address. Yes.
Some people on Zoom were saying the audio wasn't very good during their statement.
Oh, dear.
Someone's actually asking Mary to repeat.
All right, I'm going to finish. I'm going to finish what I'm reading, just so we get that out of the way and then I'll give it back to Mary. Stating your full name, you will be given a one minute and Vice Chair McGann is going to keep time on the on the public comment. You'll be given a one minute and 30 second warning. You're going to hold up your sign, Mary, so people can see what they're. So you know how much, so you know how much time is left. It's really helpful. So I don't just cut you off at two minutes and you're you're wondering where you're at in your statement. So please, please cease speaking when your two minutes are up to give somebody else a opportunity to comment. You may not cede any of your time to another speaker. Please, no cheering or booing or other clamor after or during comment. I will ask for comment from those in the chambers and from those participating in Zoom. Everyone will get a chance to speak. Who wants a chance to speak? I'll go back and forth a little bit depending. And if you are watching on YouTube, please understand that you cannot comment on YouTube, but you must join by Zoom. And then when you get on Zoom, raise your hand on Zoom and we'll we'll look for you. Thank you very much. Back to Mary for your comment again.
I will make this much shorter than I did before. I wanted people to be be very clear that this is not limiting your ability to fly in the back country and land on already established airstrips. And that it is just the beginning of trying to look at things to keep our county healthy. That was very short version of what I said, but I think I got the point across.
All right, I will, if I'll open this up for a public comment, raise your hand. Brendan, it looks like got your hand up. Thanks. Come forward and.
Thank you. My name's Brendan Cameron. And I'm sure, just like everyone else behind me, I came here just to say thanks and say really good things. I'm sure everyone behind me is going to do the same thing. About three things. Number one, I about a year ago took a job with Western Spirit and Outer Bike and had a lot of fun doing that. And we completed Outer Bike this last fall. It was one of our most successful events. And a lot of people and the people coming to Outer Bike are folks that we want here, the visitors we want. They don't just take away, they add a lot to. They were staying here. They were spending time at restaurants. Anyway, it was a great event. And so thank you for allowing us to have that event. That's the first piece. And the second piece, thank you all for working on special events permits. Because we know that we have put some input in that and that was just, that was a lot that you guys took and a lot of comments you took. So thank you for doing something about that. And we're really excited about that process for this next year. So thank you for that. And then also the last piece, thank you for the ADL ordinance that you guys had, because there are so many great workers that want to live here. And now we can fit them or attempt to fit them all here, all the people that want to work here. So thank you so much for that. That's all. I just wanted to say thank you very much and I really appreciate all of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Next, Andy.
Hi, guys. I'm Andy Lewis and I want to make this quick as well. I think that we're we're all on the same side here. And it goes back to John Mearon Gifford Pinchot and the determination between preservation and conservation. And what I would like to say to you guys, I think that this ordinance right now is what you said is it's kind of promoting tribalism. So I think that there's an us versus them right now, when it's actually just us and we all need to work together to actually come to terms with the issues that are affecting our environment, our community, population, noise, all those things. And I think that the way that the ordinance is written right now is a bit aggressive. And so I think that that aggressive side and nature of the ordinance is actually causing there to be tribalism, which makes a lot of people not want to listen or be productive. And what we need right now is to come together as a community and actually be able to progress. And so the progression of these ordinances is actually important. We actually need to keep conservation as a priority in our communities. And I agree with you guys. I think that the way that it is being done right now is inspiring and promoting tribalism and not actually inspiring progressive action.
Thank you. I'll take another one from the chambers. Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you. This is the first time I've ever spoke at a meeting like this. My name's Adam Bishop. I'm a recent arrival to Moab. Just got here in August and one of the reasons I came to Utah was because of the freedom. I came from California and I'm sure most of you are aware of it's very restrictive in California. And I'm, when I say this, I'm saying it more to you people that once it starts, it gets worse and worse and worse and your restrictions become very restrictive. And I'm saying that to everybody because I I lived it. Also, I'd like to address, I don't know if this is going to restrict balloons, but we have a very big ballooning community in Moab from what I see, and they're unable to, you know, stay on an airport. So I would hope that if something does go through, that balloons were exempt from this. It's just something you might want to consider. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you. If anyone is on Zoom that wants to be heard, please put your hand up on Zoom. Is that, can you guys see who's on Zoom? I'll take another one from the chambers while we're working on it. Yes, sir, in the back.
Hi, thanks. My name is Jared Hustman. I'm Director of Air Nautics for State of Utah. And I manage the state aviation system, which includes 25 airstrips here in Grand County. And I appreciate your comment. Thank you so much. So in the background information on in the provided agenda, the summary states Grand County has received an increase in complaints in recent years related to noise impacts from aircraft. So my office probably got an email just like yours did from everybody in the room. And we're very, very familiar with noise complaints. We take them from all over the state. So I would ask, have you collected data on the noise complaints? Do you have data on the noise complaints that you could share with me? Specifics where, when the complaint was was given, when the noise was perceived, where the noise was perceived. If you do, I would, I would love to be able to share that data. I actually do collect noise data. My office collects noise data across Grand County out of Moab Canyonlands Airport. And so I'd be happy to share my data with you if you can share your data with me. Secondly, my office is charged with establishing rules regarding the use, licensing and supervision of airports as well as the minimum standards for aircraft pilots and airports. That said, we hadn't been contacted about this proposal at all. This, we had to hurt here into the grapevine, this kind of blindsided us. So we're happy to work with you to resolve issues, but we we request that you coordinate with us on things that specifically impact pilots, aircraft and airports like this amendment does. And finally, this is, this is a pretty broad stroke. And again, I would love to see the data and share my data with you on it. But I do have to request that you table this motion until we can work together to address some of those things. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone on Zoom who has their hand raised? Wanted to switch it up a little bit. Was that say Nick Newton? Is that right? Yeah, go ahead and unmute your microphone, Nick, and speak. Okay. All right, I'll go back to someone in the chambers while we're sorting out Zoom. Who who else in the chambers would like to speak? Raise your hand, please. In the back, there's a gentleman over here in the back. Right. Yeah, right back here. Or I'm sorry. Ma'am.
My name is Del Keys. I've been in Moab for 24 years now. I'm a pilot. And most pilots really do try to be respectful. I'd like to know specifically what these complaints are, where they came from and where they were. I mean, I think the public has a right to know these things. And when you say a definition of an approved landing takeoff strip, who defines that and where does a person know to find that information or to even know to look for it? I'm sorry, I find most of this ordinance to be, I'd have to agree with the fellow from the state. That we need, this is, I don't think this is a good idea. And I think there's a few people here that might agree with me. And I think it's it's a bit of overkill. I mean, we don't, we have federal regulations, state regulations. Now we want to throw in more county regulations that other people traveling in and out here won't even know about. Well, how is, how are they supposed to get that information? What if every county in in the country decides to do this? I feel like I really agree with them. Please table this motion and get some information out to the public. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom with a raised hand? Was it Nick? Mick, I'm sorry, Mick.
Yeah, correct. Yep. Hey, you good? Ready?
No. Mick, we, we cannot hear you.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? I'm unmuted. Yeah, everybody else can hear me.
It looks like, okay. Looks like folks on Zoom can hear, but not us. Mick, we can't hear you in the chambers if you want to start over or stop for a second until we can hear.
I'm, let me know. Yep, just let me know.
Okay, you're ready to go.
Okay. Hey, my name is Mick Knutson. I actually have been running a base jumping public publication online since 1994. I've also spent countless decades now, several decades, working with various organizations such as the National Park Service with specifically the sport of base jumping in the United States. Now, the reason I bring this up is we have an incredibly large base of base jumpers here. And according to the Department of Interior, we are still classified as an aircraft. And so our base jumping parachutes are also classified as aircraft. So one of the big things that worries me here after, again, I've gone to to federal court in DC with the National Park Service, trying to talk about how to allow for our type of aircraft to be landed on actual landing fields such as Lake Powell, which is designated a landing area. And so this type of regulation also affects a huge organism, a huge group here of base jumpers. And in fact, the base jumpers recently, over Thanksgiving, just before Thanksgiving, grouped together to donate $21,000 to the search and rescue fund here to support the community. So I feel that this is also, we talked about ballooning, we talked about, you know, airplanes or trikes or, you know, power paragliders. We're also talking about base jumpers at this point because it does fall under that regulation. And again, I think I feel like with everybody, this just came out of the blue and we all heard about it, you know, through the grapevine. And this type of regulation could affect everybody, including people who are supporting the community. In fact, base jumpers this year just hit $200,000 that we support to the community. So I do believe.
That's time, Mick. Thanks. Appreciate the comments. Was there somebody else online I saw had a Nathan online? You can unmute and speak.
Yes, hello. Can you guys hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. My name is Nathan Bertusit. I've been living in Grand County for 14 years. I'm a paragliding pilot and a powered paraglider. And from my understanding, it sounds like the complaints are isolated to specific areas. Instead of pursuing an immediate outright ban, it would be nice to see, A, the county work with different outdoor communities involved to try to address the problem areas. And B, to also give us more information on exactly what the problems are. It sounds like it's isolated to noise complaints, but what areas are the complaints originating from? How many complaints are we talking about? Also, Grand County is pretty big and a blanket ban just right off the bat seems quite excessive. I'd really like to see the county give the community a chance to address these issues within themselves.
Thank you. I'll take a comment from the chambers back here.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Mark Rickert. I live here in Moab. I enjoy many types of outdoor activities, motorized and non-motorized. I'm a recreational drone pilot. I'm a skydiver. I'm a base jumper. I'm a hiker. I'm a mountain biker. And I love Moab for all of these things because it gives me access to the outdoors. I specifically have a lot of concerns about this amendment as written. First of all, like in the third whereas, what defines a high quality recreational experience? And who gets to say what is high quality and what is low quality? Passing this amendment would decrease the quality of my experience and many people such as myself here in Grand County by restricting our freedoms to participate in legal recreational flying over public lands. When I'm out hiking and I see a recreational pilot out, I smile and hope they're having a great experience here in Moab because I know the thrilling ride and the amazing views that they're seeing from firsthand experience. The views are, after all, why I live here. I too have questions about the increase in number of noise complaints and what sort of statistical merit they have for a blanket ban. Are these complaints cross referenced with other known commercial search and rescue scientific filming expeditions and pilots that that might have generated that noise complaint? How do we know that these complaints aren't coming from aircraft that will be excluded from this, from this bill? I think we should find out these things before restricting the freedoms of so many because a few don't like the momentary noise. Speaking of noise, I live right up at Kane Creek Road and I have to deal with off-road vehicles driving by my house incessantly all day long. Yet I have never made a noise complaint because I realize that I live in a place where people want to recreate. So I, for this proposed amendment, I think it should be tabled. It's as written, a bad piece of legislation and a clear example of government overreach should not be passed. Thank you very much for your time and consideration today.
Thank you. I'll take another one from the chambers. Yes, sir. Jody.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jody Patterson. I'm the Chair of the Airport Board. And last night we did have a little bit of discussion and one of the issues that the airport may face that we don't know if has been considered is the introduction of additional aircraft, particularly classes of aircraft that are not common at the airport now, such as the ultralights, the paraparachutes. And the burden that that might place on other pilots operating in the area, skyjumpers, skydivers, excuse me, and other folks, as well as the burden that it might put on airport staff or additional traffic that's going to be at that airport. Just wanted to have that in there so you can consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. I'll go back online. It looks like there's a Corey with a hand raised.
Oh, yeah. Hello. Just looking for my charger. My phone's about to die. How's everybody doing?
All right.
You guys hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, excellent. Hi, my name's Corey Ost. I'm a new resident. One of the reasons why I came to Grand County in Moab was for the freedom. I just want to say that we should be trying to instill more freedom than take away freedoms. And the previous complaints, previous comments, acquisitions, they're all, you know, stemming from somebody's personal viewpoint and I respect all that. But like it has been said, I would love to see more data. But like it has been said, I would love to see more data, more statistical data of these complaints because I see no harm. I see a lot of joy and a lot of people exercising their freedom. And if there is people that are abusing that, there are other ways to go about it than to just blanket this ban for all of the acres of Grand County. So I think this should be tabled until there is more accurate and appropriate data that would permit this kind of thing. Because I love the freedom that Moab and Grand County offers. It's one of the reasons why so many people stay. It's one of the reasons why so many people come. And if it's a matter of disrespecting these privileges and freedoms, there are other ways to address it than to just overall blanket and ban it. We're all in this together. We're on the same team. Andrew had mentioned about that tribal thing and that is what happens when we take sides. And I don't want to see anybody take sides. I want to see issues resolved. So I'm a skydiver. I'm a lover of everything aeronautical. I'm a lover of peace and quiet. And I'm a lover of loud noises. So like I see all sides. And I would just love us to come together in unison and not just throw out some sort of blanket ban that is going to harm people who are honestly just enjoying the freedoms that we have in this country and in this beautiful state, this beautiful county, this beautiful city.
That's time, Corey.
You got it. Thank you.
I'll take someone from the chambers. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mike Ortiz and I'm one of the owners of Moab Pilix. And my first trip to Moab was in nineteen eighty-two. We rented a Jeep at Faribees and drove the white rim and ran out of gas. Makes it an adventure. But I was at the meeting last night and it seemed that the county felt helpless against, you know, in regulating this so-called problem. Scott just gave me a copy of our FAA regulations. And, you know, I echo all the comments in the room, so I'm not going to repeat that. But I just want to read a couple of paragraphs here. And if I go over just a sec, please let me get this out because it's just federal stuff. So minimum safe altitude. And I'm just going to go straight to helicopters, powered parachutes, and weight-shifting aircraft. If the operation is conducted without hazard to person or property on the surface. A helicopter may operate less than the minimums prescribed in paragraph B or C, and those are airplane minimums of a thousand and two thousand feet. A powered parachute or weight-shifted control aircraft may be operated less than the minimums prescribed in paragraph C of this section. There's a catch there. That is a regulation. We cannot endanger persons and property. So if we can't fly at a safe altitude where we can save our own aircraft or avoid hitting a building, we can't fly that well. Secondly, operations over congested areas, no person may operate an ultralight vehicle over any congested area of a city, town, or settlement or over any open air assemblies of persons. These are FAA rules. So there's something to work with without sneaking Article seventeen in.
Got it. Thanks. That's time. Appreciate it. I'll take someone online. It looks like, is there a Dave Werski?
Hey, guys, how you doing?
Good.
You got me there? All right. So my name is Dave Werski. I've been a Moab resident for ten years. I've worked at, actually, at the airport for every company except for the county TSA and the airline. So I've operated with redtail fixed-wing aircraft. I'm a skydiver as well, a paraglider as well, I also base jump and worked with balloon companies. The wording in this proposition is honestly pretty scary to me because it's very loose and vague and it looks like a very slippery slope as far as if it does get approval, the possibility to just chunk other things off as well. Moab is very unique in the world as far as what access we do have and what we can do here legally. And the only other place that has an aviation community like Moab is Alaska. Additionally, I would like to have this tabled. And something that is really concerning to me is that it was publicly brought up on Saturday to be voted on on Tuesday. And that, to me, is terrifying in government. I don't think that is a safe or intense purpose of government to hear public comment in such a short period of time, especially without any data being put to the table. So if you guys can provide the data and continue with the research and show us where this stems from, we'd sure love to continue the conversation down the road. That's all I got.
Thanks, Steve. Somebody in the chambers? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ian Murchard. I'm a nine-year resident, homeowner, expert in Moab. Helped elect you guys. I'm one of your constituents. I'm also a recreational paramotor pilot and I'm strongly against this amendment. This essentially for paramotor pilots, I think, will ban us from flying in Grand County. There are no approved landing areas that we know of for us out in the desert. That's where we like to fly. There's no process that's been outlined to approve certain areas. Or if they're taken away, how would that be communicated to us? So we could essentially be flying and just arrested without even knowing it. And so this would kind of force us, as Jody was saying, to go to the airport, which is a highly dangerous environment for us to be flying around with the commercial jets and everything like that. I don't know how this process got started. I don't know how it's due process. This basically was announced a couple of days ago and here we are talking about it for a vote. Actually put it into a regulation. So I don't even know what process is supposed to happen, but this doesn't seem appropriate for such a significant change to citizens' rights. How the FAA has not even been contacted at this moment. They have an entire team that's dedicated to noise abatement for aviation activities. And there seem to be the one that would be responsible for handling this issue and giving you guys some sort of guidance on where to go with this stuff. They haven't been contacted, according to Kevin last night at the meeting. Also, you know, why are we restricting two-point-four million acres of land in Grand County for complaints that we've allegedly heard are three to five a month out of Spanish Valley and Castle Valley? That's a small subset of the area. This is the map of Grand Canyon. You're talking about two places right here that are complaining and we are trying to ban this entire area. It just doesn't seem crazy or it just seems crazy to me.
That's Tom. I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the front.
I'm Dan Kent. I've been a resident for forty years, been coming here for all my life. And I think the main thing I want to refer to here is I have empathy with everybody doing what they're doing here. But freedom is something that is shared and some people's freedoms overlap other people's freedoms and make it impossible. The main ones I want to refer to are any animal that needs quiet, which actually includes me and most of my friends. And they're the ones that got blindsided, if anything, by this meeting. But I'm sure if it's put to the vote of the people, you know what side that's going to land on. The biggest problem with most people I know in town lately has been the overflights in town from the gas company, from private helicopter pilots, from commercial tours, from people that are flying the paragliders over the northeast end of the valley. That's not even really what I'm here for, though. I just wanted to mention that wildlife is being severely impacted primarily by paramotors. If what, I'm sorry, but what the man said is true, I'm going to be really happy if you guys limit paramotor flights because that is the primary impact to raptors, which I study in this county right now. So I didn't wait forty years for the government, some government entity to do something about this. Plenty of data. My own personal experience is hundreds of encounters with low-flying planes over canyonlands, over the wildlife. I'm studying in the canyons that I'm in. It's a big problem. And, you know, if you want to limit it to small areas, great. How about the whole Colorado River Porter for miles on either side? That'd be a good start. But I've been a ranger, a guide, wildlife biologist. These things need to be limited before they're totally out of the bag and we've got UTVs in the sky, which is far worse because they echo off the cliffs and affect a lot more, particularly in terms of wildlife. So we got to decide, do we want that? Do we want quiet wildlife? Just freedom? Just dominate everything? What is freedom? How do we have freedom if Moab just keeps getting more and more filled up with all these crazy ideas?
That's time, Dan.
We already have too much. You guys got to limit it and I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you. I'll go to this gentleman in the back here.
How we doing? My name is Eugene Fernandez. I actually don't live in this county, but it's public land and I am recreating on it. But I just wanted to point out that the problem isn't the paramotors or whatever it is making the noise. It's the noise, right? So how about we regulate the noise? Mufflers are a thing. There's no need to ban the aircraft. Let's limit the noise they're creating. That's one way to. I mean, there's so many other things that need to be addressed, but I wanted to bring that forward as well. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to online. It looks like there's a, is it Rhett Burrows?
Yes, it is.
All right, go ahead, Rhett.
All right, I got three minutes.
Two minutes, Rhett, I'm sorry.
Two minutes, all right, that's cool. I'm a recreational pilot. I have a pilot's license. I fly a lot of things. I climb a lot of things. We were completely blindsided by this and I think that's a little ridiculous. Putin got elected this way. And I did a little bit of research. I don't know what it actually matters. But I would like to bring up one thing about this. And since I'm not an attorney, I would like for you guys to reference sixteen-six-A-seven-zero-four for state law in Utah about fair and reasonable voting time limits. This is a rushed vote and I think it's a little ridiculous. And also what Ian was saying, the FAA was not contacted and this class G airspace, we can do whatever we want. Unfortunately, we can right now and you guys are trying to limit that. Now, let's also talk about UTVs. I don't really have to say much more than that. Those are just downright annoying, but you know what? They're enjoying their freedoms too. And they're doing whatever they want. Everybody can do whatever they want. And I don't know why this has happened. And I feel that this is taking away our freedoms as an American and also creating a gateway to ban other activities in this great county of ours. And that's all I'm going to say. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Rhett. I'll stay online. There's, it looks like, is it a Steven? Is it Whiting?
Oh, Whiting, yes, thank you. I'll be very brief. I just want to point out that if you've ever had any time around any of these recreational vehicles, it is, there's people who are upset by them, but there are a great number of people who enjoy them. If you've ever been out with a paramotor pilot, you'll know that people flock to them because they get excited. They enjoy it. It's something that's appreciated by people in the community in addition to the pilot themselves. And I believe those people and those people's enjoyment should matter as well as the people who don't like it. I would also point out that we're talking about a noise concern here. And the role in governments to solve a problem in the least restrictive way possible. We don't kill flies with dynamite and we don't restrict freedom unnecessarily. And we haven't looked here at what other options there are that actually go straight to the heart of the issue and resolve the issue itself. And on that issue, the effect of this law in practical, as a practical matter, is it's going to condense the location where people are flying, which is very unsafe. We're talking about an issue of noise and a potential solution that could put lives at risk as it condenses people flying around. And I'm not sure if that's been considered in terms of the danger imposed or the potential liability upon the county by taking such an action that it knows could cause such danger.
Hello, this is an online, hello, this is an online call. Am I able to be heard?
All right, looks like that's it from Steven. I'll go with somebody.
This is an online caller.
Three oh three number. Okay, yeah, go ahead. You can speak.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, so my name is Joshua Gross. Moab's been a big part of my life for the last sixteen years as a home sometimes or as a recreational place. I'm a fixed-wing pilot and I just wanted to point out the nature of this imposition of noise abatement is not congruent with a lot of other FAA noise abatement. As a pilot, I fly around airports that have sensitive areas that are sensitive to noise and also around like raptor closures and stuff like that. So I just can't help but imagine that there'd be a way where we could take these residents that don't want to have paramotors wrapping around their house and make noise abatement restrictions that are around their properties or even potentially around like raptor closures or sensitive areas. I think that as a pilot, I'm really grateful to get to interact with the land and with the skies. And I think I'd speak for everyone in that. And I don't think that anyone would want to annoy homeowners or hurt nature. So I'm sure there'd be a way that we'd be able to not limit the freedoms of myself and of all the people that want to appreciate the land and the skies while still taking care of the homes, the other homeowners and the nature requirements and stuff like that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Back to the chambers? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Wendy Lessig. I'm here on behalf of the Recreational Aviation Foundation and its eleven thousand members across the United States. I'm the Utah liaison for the RAF. And RAF is, it's a nonprofit organization whose mission is to preserve, improve, and create airstrips for recreational access. I'm a pilot of a fixed-wing airplane and my passion is backcountry aviation. I fly for the enjoyment of it and the backcountry experience. I like quiet too. But as a pilot, I try to be courteous and respect others who are also out to enjoy the backcountry. Grand County has twenty-five airstrips, including the Canyon and Lance Municipal Airport. A lot of those, it might be hard for somebody to find out where those are and how to access them. I believe that there's, I would like to see more information about the noise and where, when, just like other people have expressed. And I believe that we're on the same page. We want to work together. In the twenty years of the RAF's existence, we've built a reputation on working cooperatively with government agencies and private entities and pilot groups. And I think that we can work together to resolve the noise issue. So I respectfully ask that you table the ordinance as it's written.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, back here.
I would also like to start by thanking everyone for their participation. Obviously, conservation and.
Did you state your name?
Jesse.
Jesse.
Obviously, conservation and sustainability is a bit of an oxymoron in a community based on mining and then ranching and then tourism. So obviously, there's challenges. I've worked with a wide range of different groups and event programming. Obviously, there's a widespread of people that participate. In the definition and wording of the amendment, there are words that are pretty broad and descriptions that are broad. And we use a wide range of different public lands such as parks, BLM, and other spaces. And that's through private access or defined as casual use of public lands through, I believe, right-of-way is what is referred to in BLM. Special permitting, usually when we apply for things with special permitting, there's an environmental assessment. That environmental assessment can take months. We've applied before with BLM and it's taking several months for a response sometimes. And obviously, that's not easy data to collect. And so just getting back to the focus of lack of information and data outlining the complaints and how we're going to resolve these issues, it'd be good to see some sort of norm. uh, resolve these issues, it'd be good to see some sort of nor- noise report or decibel readings along with which user groups are using these spaces, along with where these areas are, um, most important. Uh, it'd be nice to get a cross-reference of this data from the FAA, the FAA, the Wildlife and Game, BLM, city and county, uh, groups. Moving forward with current limitations of existing airports, locations, uh, localizing impact is a great idea, but there are restrictions to using these existing.
That's time, sir. Thank you. Uh, anyone online with a raised hand? I can't tell. Can you, Quinn? Okay, I'll go back to the chamber. Uh, yes, sitting down here.
My name is Jimmy Peterson, thirteen-year resident. Um, I have been involved in all types of aviation. I support all activities in Moab through climbing, jeeping, all of it. I think all of it's great. Um, I think that this has been very rushed, um, and a lot of us found out about it just a couple days ago. Um, as far as noise complaints go, I would like to know more about the noise complaints because we as the aviation community are more than willing to work around that. Um, we're not trying to make anyone mad or anything like that. This ship brought up the Raptors, um, there's ways around that as well. If you want to talk noise, well, what about the semis throwing on their engine brakes coming into town? When I lived out by the Star Center, that was a constant problem, way louder than a paramotor or an airplane or a helicopter and it happens all the time. As far as this goes, I feel like it was very rushed and I would like to see more evidence, um, and more studies done. So I asked that it be tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, in the chambers still? Uh, yes.
Hello, Derek Hansen. I'm a Moab resident. I've lived here for fifteen years, went to Grand County High School. It was my dream to become an aviator and that's what I've done. I am a new commercial instrument pilot. And this concerns me because, uh, I believe it does restrict a lot of freedoms for aviators. And, um, I would like to see, uh, data, uh, about noise because I believe this is for noise. I would like to see data on whether it is in fact because of takeoff and landings or if it is just aircraft flying overhead. Because I believe there is a difference. Cause we do have a very beautiful area in Moab and so a lot of people come from far and wide to see our, um, our beautiful county. And, um, so there is a great demand for, uh, aviators to fly over our beautiful country. And, um, I believe that this is very rushed and not well thought out. And, uh, we definitely should get more data as far as noise complaints. And as an aircraft owner, if addressing the mufflers, attaching a muffler to an aircraft is not a cheap endeavor. It is very expensive and I would not want to attach a five thousand dollar muffler to my little airplane so I can fly over, uh, where I live. Um, so I just find that deeply concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, stay in the chambers. Anyone care to come up? Yes, sir, in the back in the blue.
Good evening. My name's Roy Evans. I'm a professional aviator, recreational aviator, and the proud president of the Utah Backcountry Pilots Association. Preserving and protecting Utah's rich backcountry aviation heritage has fostered a community thousands strong that have empowered me to stand before you to, uh, request that we not only table this, but to come together to figure out an amicable resolution to address these concerns. I'm actually quite blown away that everybody that's talked so far tonight, even though the few that are pro this amendment all agree that there's an opportunity for us to come together to collaborate, whether it's gathering the data, having that conversation with the community and such, to come up with a way for us to all exist peacefully and to enjoy our recreational freedoms across this county is just, it honestly, it's just blowing me away. Uh, Ms. McGinn, I appreciate your comments about how the proposal does not restrict our abilities to do those things. However, the way it's written still raises concerns with, I believe, most of us that are standing here today, even those pro the amendment. So I suggest that the, the commission finds the opportunity to reach out to organizations like myself, the Recreational Aviation Foundation, the State Aeronautics Department, and other recreational users across this area to find out how we can come to that amicable resolution because I know it's possible. I've seen it with the work we've done from the Nature Conservancy to the Bureau of Land Management, to SITLA, to county commissions, much like yourself, and private landowners as well. We've been able to find a way to exist peacefully and coexist in this amazing world that we have to enjoy. And I think we can do that as well. My organization and myself are available for you to make that happen. Thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Thanks. Uh, keep it in the chambers. Yes, sir, in the back.
Hi there. Ethan Johnson. I, uh, live here in Moab six years or so. Um, I work for Redtail and I'm a pilot for them. I'm also a recreational pilot as well. Um, on an airplane here. Um, I just want to speak to what I believe is the relative ineffectiveness of this, uh, law. I think a lot of the noise complaints, if that's what this is truly about, are coming from, um, a lot of the noises produced by aircraft overflying. We've got the survey plane that was mentioned that comes out about once a month. People coming and going, uh, to the airports. I think it would reduce the amount of noise very, uh, very limited way, but the noise from overflying aircraft would still remain. Um, I think it would push the few bad actors further into the backcountry, continuing to do what they do, um, land where they shouldn't be landing in theory. Um, I don't really think it would have that much effect on the whole, um, on the noise in this region.
Thanks, thanks, Ethan. I'm gonna, we, we have a long, uh, agenda to get to. I'm gonna give another twenty minutes of comments. That takes us to five fifteen. So I'll keep it.
Can I say something like? Uh, I spoke, uh, Mr. Walker, Commissioner Walker and myself spoke today and we both agree that, uh, we want to spend more time looking at this, meeting with people. We agreed with it on this before the meeting, but we wanted people to have the opportunity to speak. And so, uh, I, I know when we come to this agenda item number six, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone, not table, means bring it back up on the same meeting. Uh, postpone, uh, this, uh, this item until we've had time to bring the BLM and various groups together to discuss the issues and come up with a clearer, more concise way of dealing with it. And I for one want to say thank you because you helped us move forward in a more positive way. So, uh, in case, I just wanted you to know that so that if you're worried that you're going to be cut off and not have an opportunity to speak, that this will be coming up later. But anyway, our chair said we have another twenty minutes of public comment.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, I believe, did you have your hand up before? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Steph Davis. I've lived here for thirty years. I don't like politics. I vote in every election. I don't do motorized sports. Um, noise is an issue primarily because of non-stop truck and tourism traffic on Main Street and the UTVs. Those are not being restricted at this time. I object to having any sort of unsupported regulation targeting aerial user groups without the public comment period. I would be concerned about collaborating only with the BLM. I think it would be important to bring in other groups. Um, this matters. As I said, I don't do motorized sports. I have zero interest in them. I don't even like them. I complain to myself, not to you. When snowmobiles drive over the fresh track and the LaSalle's that the volunteers are working to groom for the Nordic skiers. I also understand the snowmobiles have as much right to be there as I do with my dog. That matters to me. Same thing happens when I'm running on a trail. I have to go around a big pack of mountain bikers who are going slower than I am as a runner. I'm not that fast. Jeepers who can't drive faster than a runner, UTVs who are trying to run over my dog. I think all those user groups are extremely annoying and I think my activity is the best. But I also know it's actually not the best. I am one person out of eight billion people on this planet and everyone else has an equal right to be here. That's really important to me. That's the bottom line. That is why we all live in Moab. So I hope that you'll keep that in mind.
Thanks, Steph. Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you all for your service in Surinac County and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Russ Robin Robinson and I live in Van County now. Utah is one of the most beautiful states in America and in my opinion, the most beautiful in the American West. Grant?
Put your iPad down a little bit because the microphone's right.
Copy that, thank you.
Thanks.
Grand County holds the heart of that beauty. It's why there are two national parks here. The county is almost as big as it is beautiful. It's nearly four thousand square miles. And of those thousands of square miles, only three percent or so is private land. I would argue that's why our community is so passionate about this beautiful place. It's truly magical and it has been for eons of time. The size of our county, however, has drawbacks to one set of Americans. That's those that are elderly and immobile. The only way for those citizens can, to see this great land is through aviation. Removing these rights is a direct discrimination to those unable to hike tens of thousands of miles over this unforgiving but beautiful land. And I know you guys aren't restricting the right to fly over, but to land in these beautiful places, you definitely are restricting with this ordinance. The FAA has addressed off-airport landings, which are totally restricted. They have guidelines for it. It's so important in helicopter curriculum that it's required in the check rod that you take through the FAA. It's a, it's an integral part of the aviation community. Restricting all off, off-airport landings just isn't right. It's not fair. It's not lawful and it's discriminating. The board said yesterday, there were just a few complaints per week. There are nine thousand people in this county. That's less than one tenth of one percent of the people that are complaining.
I'm sorry, that's, uh, that's time. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, I'll keep taking comments from the chamber? Uh, yes, in the back, please.
Hi, my name is Kristen Adams. I'm a resident here in Grand County and I don't do any of these sports. Um, I know these people, I hang out with them. And generally they are super regulated and take care of business when it needs to be taken care of. My partner, he runs a Facebook group for par- excuse me, power paragliding. And he's really careful to tell anybody that's coming to town where to go, where not to go, where not to disturb people. Um, he's one of the most responsible people I've ever known. And I'm sure that if you guys took the time to meet with these groups and talk about how to resolve issues, there would be a solution rather than an ordinance that immediately regulates these groups. So I'm just a normal citizen. I don't have a stake in their game, but I don't agree with pushing this through. So I'm glad to hear that you guys want to postpone it and I hope that you'll take the time to learn more about the issue and make sure that everyone gets a little bit of a stake in this game. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone online with a raised hand currently? All right, I'll take someone else from the chambers right now. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Brett.
Yep, I'm Brent Kane. I've lived in Moab twenty years. And I've been a farmer rancher for fifty-three years of my life. So being outside with nature, with the dirt, with the land is a very integral part of my life and it is here in Moab every single day. My biggest concern is, um, but a lot of others have said, which is this is our public land. It's my public land, your public land, your public land and you to just, you to decide how you want to use it is up to you. It's not for me to vote on how you use it, as long as it's within the law. The main thing I don't like to see, mining, oil, gas, but I have to get along with that, just like we all do. I don't want to see it. And when I came here, right to the, the BLM, right off the bat, why are they putting all these new roads in here? How do they get to do all this? Will they go about it the right avenues to do that? And they have a right to use it just as I do. You have to look at the good in all of that and the good of that is, well, I get more roads to be able to go see more areas that I normally wouldn't be able to do that when I have a new oil field road. That doesn't make me happy, but it also doesn't make me want to make them stop because most of all, our freedoms are what we need to protect here. And I think that you all need to really consider working with these user groups rather than eliminating these user groups. And thank you for saying that you want to look at this in a broader spectrum and get more information on it before you make a decision on that. Thank you so much. And, uh, please table this or put it aside to where we can get a decent understanding of it and work with all these user groups. Thank you so much. Thanks, y'all.
Thanks. Um, uh, yeah, there's someone online. Is it Braden?
Yes, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, so my name's Braden Butler. Um, I, I'm from Logan, Utah, and I frequently visit, uh, ground, Grand County uh, to fly paramotors. I've built my whole life around flying paramotors. I don't have many legal lakes to stand on here, uh, so I'm, I'm kind of hoping I can at least pull on some heartstrings here. Uh, but there's two things that I, I see really wrong with this proposal and I think this is number one, an overreach of authority to restrict recreational freedom. Number two, uh, this is taking away almost all of our very, very favorite places to fly. Uh, and to kind of explain that, uh, Grand County has some of the most iconic terrain and land features that when seen from the sky, it just, it takes your breath away. I, I can't even express how incredible it is and honestly, I would like to demonstrate this to even take one of you chamber members on tandem flight if, if you'd be willing to take me up on the offer. Uh, that way I can show you how, how incredible it is. Um, some of these airstrips in the backcountry, paramotors can use them, but I don't think it's a good idea. We, we don't want to go near other airplanes since we don't have ways to communicate with those airplanes and I think that would be unsafe. There's lots of very isolated places, far from civilization and far from wildlife that we fly. But there are already far more areas within Grand County that I think nobody ever touches with an airplane or with a helicopter or a paramotor. So that means there's plenty of areas for wildlife and civilization to enjoy peace and quiet. That's all I have and I'd also like to ask you guys to, to postpone this decision until more data can be collected. Thank you.
Thanks, Braden. Uh, someone else in the chambers care to speak? We have enough time. Yeah, in the back.
My name is Rob Hunter. One of my passions is airplane camping. I like to fly my antique airplane to backcountry airstrips and then turn it off and go camping for a weekend. Sometimes go backpacking from that, that airstrip. Um, I use my, my airplane just as a, a way of getting to the, the airport trailhead to do activities that so many other people do in this beautiful county. I'm very thankful, Commissioner McGinn, that, that your intent is not to close those backcountry airstrips. And I hope that when you bring this ordinance or some version of it back in the future, that it will specifically say that is not the intent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, anyone else in the chamber like to come up and speak? We have enough time for about four more. Okay, I'll go online. Is that Elijah or Elena? I'm sorry.
Elena?
Yes, please.
Hi, can I, can you guys hear me all right? I'm Elena Thornhill. Um, I've lived in Moab for about ten years. Um, I'm an outdoor enthusiast. Um, I'm a paragliding pilot, a balloonist. Um, I'm a homeowner there in Moab. Um, this is really concerning to me to hear, get such short notice on such a big proposition that can make such an impact on such a large group. Um, I really feel that we need to do more, more research. I also feel like we need, all the groups need to talk together a little bit more. Um, it doesn't seem, I mean, is there a way that we can have, find out where the raptor nests are, where pilots shouldn't be flying? Can information be put out? Like, it seems like we should be able to work together a little better to get this resolved instead of just going ahead and just saying, oh, no, get rid of all of it. So if, if possible, I'd like to see more information and us trying to work together on it.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I've got. Thanks.
Great. Uh, Joseph online, is a hand raised?
Yeah, uh, how's it going? I, I'm a professional helicopter pilot. I've lived in Utah for a long time. I'm actually moving to Utah and, and, uh, I have started a helicopter company and I'm bringing a helicopter out that way. Um, Um, I think, uh, we all understand that we enjoy, uh, Moab and the area for what it is. But the the main things to really focus on are, you know, us as pilots, we do take those things seriously. Um, I love the outdoors as much as anyone else. And, you know, I I want to be in peace and quiet just as much as anyone else as long, even though I'm a helicopter pilot. But, you know, some of the things to focus on is, you know, the noise is one thing. But, you know, we're talking, you know, mere minutes, seconds sometimes that maybe you hear an aircraft. Because as the backcountry pilots put it, it's transitory in nature. We come in, we land, we shut down if we're going to stay there, or we continue on. So the amount of time that you might be hearing an aircraft is very limited. And then to the effect of damaging the the land, you know, like I said, I take great pride in not damaging things. And we all try to point out when people do things wrong. But, you know, the idea that aircraft are causing, they're one of the least damaging, uh, modes of transportation that exist out that way. You know, uh, the from what I've seen from just hikers stepping on crypto or walking where they shouldn't, uh, leaving trash, uh, the ATVs that are constantly making noise and doing anything. And and that's not to say that any of those should be banned as well. Um, but, you know, the idea that a helicopter that leaves two six-foot, um, contact points on the on the ground is causing damages.
That's that's time, Joseph.
Thank you. Yep.
Thanks. I have time for about two or three more at the most. Um, anyone in the chambers care to come forward? Yes.
Hi, I'm Abby Hearn. I'm going to read this from my phone. Um, I'm a local photographer and community member here in Moab. My one-year-old daughter was born here, and ironically, we actually just had an aviation-themed birthday party for her a couple days ago. Um, it's been a really fun frequent activity in her life. She's been flying in private aircraft in the Moab area since she was the size of a chubby bear in my belly. And our dream is for this to remain an essential part of her life for as long as she wants. Um, I've chosen to put down roots and raise my daughter in Moab because this place encourages living an alternative life. We love to hike, take photos, rock climb, jeep, bike, pack raft, and explore Moab just about any way we can. For work, I photograph high-end small weddings and elopements, which brings great low-impact tourism to our town. We have been working very closely with BLM for a few years now, helping them establish a simple but effective permitting system so local and non-local wedding vendors who use our public lands will give a percentage of their earnings back to the local BLM. We love the quietness and vastness of the desert. It's part of our the experience that drew us here and what draws our couples here. In my experience, anytime an aircraft has flown over us, it's been a fun and exciting moment that lasts a few seconds and only adds energy to what it feels like to be in Moab. It's cool to be out there exploring by foot or by jeep only to see a helicopter and imagine their view. Um, although I'm sharing my personal experience here, which I can attest is shared with my husband and many local friends, I hope this perspective as a Moab local contributing small business owner and a mother can help show that our opposition to this amendment isn't just about niche activity groups. This is about all of us. Ask anyone who intentionally chose Moab as their home, and they'll tell you about the people, the desert, and the energy that this community has. I'm certain it does not reflect the desires of the majority of people living in Grand County. So we are asking you to reconsider, and I hope that this is moved forward later that you guys talk about this and have time to actually consider it.
Thank you. All right, I have about time for one more. Who would like to, uh, have the final comment? Yes, sir. Hey, Tracy.
Hello, my name's Tracy Mischow. Um, I had originally prepared some comments, and they were going to echo many of the previous comments I've heard standing in the back of the room for the past hour. Um, rather than bore you with more of that, um, and talk about what is largely perceived as overreach and otherwise an ill-conceived ordinance that probably won't address the problem. I would like to point out what I haven't heard. And I haven't heard one individual over the past hour speak in favor of the ordinance. And to me, that speaks volumes.
We had one.
Did I miss someone?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And we had a number online.
Okay, well, I couldn't hear those in the background.
That's all right, Tracy.
So, um, I dare say then, in any event, that the those in favor were far outweighed by those that are opposed. And that, to me, still speaks quite strongly. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. All right, I want to thank everyone for your comments and for for keeping the discourse very civil. Appreciate everybody coming out, and, uh, if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we welcome you. Um, and with that said, we're going to get to our regular agenda, and the first item on that is a presentation. Um, if you guys can make way for, uh, Ranger Brody Young and Chase Peely to come forward, we're going to, um, hear clarifications on HB one eighty. Thanks for your, uh, thanks for your patience, uh, Chase and Brody.
Am I able to hook up the computer right here?
Um.
Just a HDMI.
Oh, I think so. Uh, computer hookup, Quintermellon or Alicia or Chase?
Thank you. There's actually.
Ah, okay.
Either way, I just wanted to. I'm not logged in. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you do my contact?
Uh, please, yeah. Yeah.
So that's it, Director.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Maybe, uh, hand hand my.
Please reach out to me.
I already wrote it down, so you can just go to.
So we coordinate.
Did you come up with Salt Lake today?
Down, Salt Lake. Um, let's just coordinate on this.
Right there, I'll go on the second.
It wasn't good. Thank you, man. Thanks for pressing on. I appreciate it. But you're but you're excited to get your. Yeah.
No, it's not to help. I haven't since I. So just so, actually, it's it's. So I can only extract, you know, moves.
Well, if if it is a beauty person, I don't really know.
I don't have to.
It doesn't feel.
Yeah, then I'm going to get out of here.
Oh, tonight, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, item six two, uh, there's. I would estimate it would be. It could be. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, guys, we're going to, um, we have our presentation scheduled, so I'd ask for silence, please, in the chambers, and we will hear from, uh, Brody Young and Chase Peely.
All right, thanks for having us. So I am Chase Peely. I'm the OHV Program Manager for Division of Outdoor Recreation. This is Lieutenant Brody Young down here. So thanks for having us. I know we had a presentation this last commission meeting, and we just wanted to clarify a few items. So what I presented here is our our flyer is what what we call it. It's being distributed around, and I think most of, maybe not most of you, but it's been circulating through social media, news sources, and stuff like that. So I'll just go kind of from that top down on our purpose of of the OHV education course. It's coming January first of this next year, and it's listed at the bottom of this flyer. So with this, we're equipping our operators with the awareness of our OHV laws under Title forty-one, twenty-two, one, Utah Code Annotated. So bringing that awareness, promoting our rider safety, promoting respect for the communities, which is a big component of this education, and then promoting our sustainable and and respectful use for these areas. So that's the purpose. That's the background, and that's listed in the in House Bill one eighty where this came from. The basic components of this course is over eighteen. You're required to take this course. You're under eighteen, so eighteen years of age and older, under eighteen. It's our existing youth hands-on and or online education. If it's an online course, it's that thirty-five dollars, as it always has been. The types of OHVs, and I know this was the misconception, miscommunication, misinterpretation this last time, are type one ATVs, are quads, anything fifty inches or less that you can saddle on, that would be required. Our type two UTVs, side-by-sides, that'd be our Razors, Can-Am's, Mavericks, Tarexes. And then our type three OHVs, which can be classified if it doesn't fall into those definitions. A common one that we that we interpret is our rock crawlers. You do see a lot of those that don't have that motor vehicle registration. And then our off-highway motorcycles are required to take this course. Now, listed below, this was the big thing last time, is all street-legal off-highway vehicles. We're getting a lot of questions on that of what is a street-legal off-highway vehicle? It is shown on the registration from the DMV that this is a registered street-legal off-highway vehicle. That'd be required if it was a motor vehicle registration that a jeep gets. Uh, a common term is if it has that big plate, that would be your motor vehicle registration compared to your off-highway vehicle registration. Our exemptions are listed here. Our snowmobiles are exempted, our implement of husbandry, and our guided tours. So not the tour guides themselves, people actually going on those tours. And then our sanctioned OHV events. Rentals, so if they're renting the our rental companies, if they're renting these, an unguided tour, they need to verify that before letting them rent. And I've talked to some of my our rental partners. A lot of them have mentioned that they're going to do a preemptive send out of this course so that they can have it for ease of access for them, getting them on the trail sooner. So that's just one way of one company that's that's mentioned that for us. Our non-resident visitors, they're required to take this course before getting their non-resident permit on our online site, ohhvUtah.gov. Beginning January first, this is when we're going to have this course available for everybody. And then enforcement and education will begin February first of twenty twenty-three, as stated in House Bill one eighty from this last session. That's what I wanted to clarify, and if I didn't clarify anything from the last meeting, let me know. But that is, uh, that's what we have going forward.
Awesome. Thank you, Chase. Yeah, that that definitely goes a long way towards, uh, clarifying some of the some of the stuff that was brought up at the last meeting. Uh, questions for for Chase and or Brody? I'll I'll take one. Yeah, yes, sir, in the back. Uh, yeah, please come up. Yeah, we so folks online can hear you.
Yeah, I was just reading the flyer, and it says it's a free online course, but then it says purchase the non-resident OHV permit. So if you're a resident, you have to, is it free? It's only non-resident purchase. How much is it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our non-resident user fees would be that essential registration. It's an OHV permit to operate if you are a non-resident. The course itself, so if you are in-state resident, the or non-resident, the course itself is not costing the user.
Okay. Does that make permit a new thing, or is that supposed?
So the non-resident tag has always been in place, is around that thirty-five dollars online, and then it's been thirty dollars at our vendor sites.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks. Uh, any other questions for Chase, Chase or Brody, uh, concerning HB one eighty? All right. Yeah, thank you so much for coming down, and we very much appreciate the clarification. That's, yeah, great. Thanks.
You got up easy this time.
Right, last last time was tough. And thanks for your work on this, too. I think I think this is a great program, and and we're looking forward to the implementation of it.
I I want to just quickly mention the enforcement, it says begins February first. It'll be, we're going to educate for a year until we can get this implemented. About a year from now, then, we'll really start enforcement, so.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're very excited about this House bill. Thank you.
We'll make it right.
Yeah.
Great.
Am I done presenting on there?
Yeah, you can you can.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, we have another presentation. Uh, Commissioner Kevin Walker is going to give us a presentation on visitation and traffic statistics. Um, if you're ready, Kevin.
Um, almost ready. I just lost my Zoom window, so, yeah. I'll give you give you a second. Okay, got it. Um, yeah, so I should go ahead and share my screen. Okay, um, so did, I mean, this isn't specific to anything on the agenda today, but, you know, you know, throughout the year, we discuss visitation trends in Moab, financial trends in Moab, all all these things. A lot of these are anecdotal, and, um, what I try to do here in this present presentation is just, you know, collect up some, um, some, you know, harder statistics that cover, you know, like try to capture total level of visitation instead of to individual places. Um, and also look at multiple years at once just to put out, to put things in context. So it's it's going to be mostly a bunch of numbers and charts. I'll try to make it interesting. Um, so, uh, first one, uh, this is Arches' visitation since nineteen eighty. And, um, that's the blue line. The red line is linear fit going up to twenty twelve, which is just before the Mighty Five campaign um, started, and you can see, starting in twenty thirteen, you know, suddenly there's a whole lot more people in Arches. There's this gap right here during COVID twenty twenty. Um, I don't have the twenty twenty-two numbers on here. They're a little bit lower because of the, um, reservation system, but still, you know, in this higher range, not back to this red trend line. So this is the theme we're going to be seeing through a lot of these charges. Things seem to change quite a bit in twenty thirteen, which we all kind of knew anecdotally. But to, you know, have have some actual data for it is is hopeful. Um, okay, this is, um, this is my my favorite graphic. Um, so how how we don't have an official count of how many people are in the valley at any good time, and we certainly don't have it going back, you know, multiple years. So to put it, um, UDOT has a traffic counter, and this traffic counter is just north of the, um, junction with the Potash Road. So, um, and and accounts traffic in both directions, and we can look at the trend over various years. Um, I actually want to share a live version of this. Let's see if um, that works. You know, here we go. So, um, you know, the the colors in the graph, um, you know, it starts low and lower in two thousand and five, and as we progress through the years, um, it's, you know, growing relatively. it's, you know, growing relatively slowly, and then we hit around 2013, and starts to grow a lot faster. It's, you know, if you ask, what's the biggest weekend of the year, is it Labor Day, Memorial Day? At least in terms of traffic, it's definitely Memorial Day. Sorry about that, Labor Day. And, you know, a question we, and one thing that's come up a lot is, I'm just going the wrong direction. You know, how does this year compare, you know, what's the trend? And it's tricky, because we've got a couple of unusual years. If I hover over early May here, look at this graph on the other side, you can see there's a big drop-off in 2020, because a big chunk of that year was the, you know, total COVID dip, and then things came roaring back in 2021. So when we try to assess 2020, should we be carrying to 2021? So the red bar over here is, should we be looking at the gray bar? Black bar, some combination, 2019. What I usually like to do is take 2020, this is 2022, and we compare it to 2019 and 2018, and you can see it's pretty similar, probably a little bit higher. Okay, so that's traffic. So there are definitely still a lot of people coming here, but are they spending money? And so for that, we can look at tax data. Oh, actually, so here's the traffic average over the entire year. So, you know, relatively flat, starts growing pretty fast around 2013, and we have, you know, the weird, two weird COVID years, one strangely low, one strangely high, and now we're back kind of on the original trend line. Okay, so general sales tax revenue, so this isn't tourism-specific taxes, and this is adjusted for inflation. And you can see the bar over here on the left, it's up quite a bit higher. So people, you look at the amount of money that's being spent in the valley, it's up quite a bit compared to pre-COVID, and it's actually even pretty high, pretty high compared to 2021. And I do want to emphasize that this is inflation-adjusted data. So the increase between 20, you know, if we skip over the anomalous COVID years and just compare 2019 to 2020, it's about a 30% increase, which annualizes to 9.3% a year, so that is very healthy growth. The previous three years, from 2016 to 2019, averaged a little under 5% a year. And then we can look at the same things. This is without the inflation adjustment, if you're suspicious of the CPI or something like that, but it's, it just, you know, just shows the growth numbers even higher, because we aren't subtracting out inflation. Okay, what about tourism-specific taxes? And there, the trend is even more pronounced, I think. And so again, we have a 26% increase from 2019 to 2022, and that annualizes to 8.1% per year growth. If you look at the previous three years, it's just about the same, slightly less. So if you look at the amount of tourism, you know, I think by any measure, tourism has been increasing at a very fast clip since 2013, 2014, and it's continuing to do so, so we don't see a dip. One thing I should have said, these figures are for January through September, because we don't have tax for 2022. You know, we don't get the tax date until a couple of months later, so we're comparing the same parts of each year. Okay, and the same, same figures without the inflation adjustment, spinning text, I'm trying to make the charts seem more interesting. Hard to get this. Okay, now, um, okay, so, but, you know, going back to some past discussions, is this gonna line up with our anecdote, you know, what do we feel like if we're a business owner, if we're guiding tours, is it gonna feel the same? And not necessarily. You know, overall, spending is not the same as business, individual businesses, and part of that's because of growth in the number of businesses. So that, you know, the pie is growing, but we're trying to get more slices out of it, and so the slices might be growing or shrinking, depending on how many slices we're trying to get. And so we don't, I don't have comprehensive data for this in all sectors, but we do know, you know, because of our overnight accommodations, their work, that the number of hotels, condos, other rental units has seen a bigger than 20% increase since 2019, and if the full pipeline is built out, that should be about a 38% increase. So, you know, tourism is going fast, but the number of hotels is growing, at least is fast. And so that means if you're a hotel operator, you're probably doing about the same. And then, you know, thanks to our chairman here, I know exactly how many bike shops are around. And there's been about a 40% increase since 2017. So, so again, the pie is growing, but we're slicing it thinner, because we have more businesses, and that can account for a mismatch, you know, if we're looking at sales tax revenue, it's like really strong growth, but if you're an individual business, not necessarily. So for hotels, we can look at that a little bit more closely. So what's this messy graph? This is each color corresponds with a different year. We have 2013 through 2022, and this is the occupancy rate, as reported by STR. STR is a company that reports on, you know, average daily rates and things for hotels. So for Moab, this data is from mostly like the bigger chain hotels. The smaller mom-and-pop hotels don't participate in the star system, because you have to pay something. So this isn't the whole lodging thing, but it's a, it's a pretty big slice of it, and it's the best we can do. You can see this little red line, that's 2020, so things really did dip around April. And then the two lines I've highlighted, the pink is this year, so it only goes up to October, and then the blue is 2019. But what should really stand out here is there's not a big difference between any of these lines. So even though the number of visitors is up, you know, I would guess about 70%, the occupancy rate at hotels is about the same as it has been for the past 10 or so years, and then again, you know, it's because, um, because there are more hotels than there used to be. We can also slice the data by, you know, put months together, so now each color represents a different month. And you'll see that in some months, 2020 was a really low year, because at the beginning of the year. The only thing to take away from this graph is that, you know, the first thing is that most of the lines are pretty flat. So that means if you're looking at, say, only April, you know, there's not a big difference between 2014 and 2022 in terms of occupancy rate. But if you look closer, you know, beyond the first order to the second order, a lot of these lines are sloping up as we get to 2022, so occupancy rates are going up, I would say, a small amount. Okay, now, final slide. We also, and again, I guess the theme of this presentation is trying to, you know, get beyond anecdotes and, you know, look at data. It's really hard to do that with public opinion. Earlier this year, the Utah Office of Tourism sponsored, you know, Utah Resident Opinions on Tourism, local area survey results. So they went through tourism centers throughout the state and asked people a lot of questions. I encourage everybody to dig up this thing, it's about 100 pages, and with lots of very detailed questions about tourism, like, you know, what do you think it's helping quality of life? Do you think it's increasing diversity of shopping? You know, sliced it lots of different ways. And one thing that really stands out from this report is that in Moab, people are not happy about tourism compared to other parts of the state. So, the one, I'm plucking four results out of, you know, hundreds of questions, but, um, you know, one that stands out is 59% of Moab area residents think that the quality life has declined due to tourism, while 21% think it's improved. That's, you know, those figures are more stark than anywhere else in the state. It's Table 60 from the report. 79% of Moab area residents think that we are overcapacity in many places. 67% think that the effects of tourism on the natural environment are negative or very negative. 49% think that the effects of tourism on human health and safety are negative or very negative, and 18% think it's positive or very positive. So those are, those are not good numbers, and again, this shouldn't be, you know, anyone who's lived around here and talked to a variety of people, is probably, I'm, you know, certainly lines up with my anecdotal feel of the vibe of the community, which is people who've lived here, think things are not getting better. And so who's, I just want to close, and so I think the report's authors also noticed this, and so right in their introduction for the statewide report, they say that Moab area sponsors are particularly notable, and that they tend towards a more negative view of tourism, despite having the largest portion of respondents, people being polled who have some part of their household income, depending on tourism, or think that it's very important to local economy. So we in Moab, you know, a lot of us depend on tourism. All of us know that our economy depends on tourism, and still, we don't like tourism. And so whose jobs are to fix that? Well, it's, you know, spread over lots of different agencies, but I think it's, you know, ours, more than anyone's. You know, we control local planning and zoning, we, you know, the BLM listens to us, the state, you know, hopefully listens to us. And so I think, you know, our, you know, we need to continue to try really hard, just like we do with housing. You know, we've done a lot of things on housing, but prices are still really high, so, you know, we can't, can't just call it done. We have to try, you know, try to do even more, and I think it's similar in terms of visitor attitudes, and it's, um, we've got, the survey isn't quite as thorough, but we also have surveyed yet data showing that, you know, visitors are also affected by these things, you know, and anecdotally, you talk to people who've been coming to Moab and say, well, gee, the last time I went there, you know, it wasn't as nice as it was in the past. So this makes me sad, but I think, you know, throughout the year, and various ordinances come up, that we're trying to address some of these problems, whether it's housing, crowding, you know, issues in Arches, noise on streets. So I, I just, you know, hope we keep this in mind as we work throughout, you know, the coming year to try to turn this around. Thanks.
Alright, thanks for the presentation, Kevin. Any, yes, Mary?
People that are interested in seeing this visit, this presentation, you can get it if you go to Grand County's website and go to today's meeting, it's online. So it's available to anyone that would like to see it. And I would like to thank Commissioner Walker for going through this very, what to me looks like a very tedious process of pulling all this data together. Thank you.
I love that tediousness.
You know he loves math, you know he loves numbers.
Is the, how about the, um, the survey that you talked about, Kevin? Is that, was that in?
Yeah, so on the slide, I put a link to it.
You did put a link to it.
The Utah Office of Tourism put it up on a Google Drive, so that's, there might be other ways to get to it, but.
Okay, so if anyone wanted to check out that whole USU survey that Kevin alluded to, it is online, and you can access that and look through the whole thing. And it pertains to the whole state, not just Moab, and it was done by the University of Utah. Alright, we have another public comment period at 6 o'clock. We don't take public comment during the course of the meeting. But like I said, people will be tuning in at 6 o'clock if you do want to stick around and make a comment. Thank you. Alright, we're up to our, we have no department or agency reports today, so we're up to approval of meeting minutes, and we're approving minutes from four meetings, the November 14th Joint Workshop of the Grand County Commission and the Budget Advisory Board, November 15th Joint Workshop of same entities, as well as our regular commission meeting, and the November 18th Meeting of the Grand County Board of Canvassers concerning the election.
I move to approve the aforementioned minute.
Thanks, Sarah.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner McGann. Any discussion on?
Yeah, so I do have some discussion, something I forgot to say when Mary was thanking me for this is, I wanted to give a hat tip to Chris Baird, who put, you know, the sales tax data, is stuff that he's collected and and put together, and then Ben Arthur has also, you know, the occupancy rate data comes from there. So, you know, there's other people in the county who are, you know, doing this, and so I don't want to claim credit for their work.
And that's Ben from our Economic Development Department. Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve minutes. Any, any motion was by Commissioner Stock, and the second was by Commissioner McGann. Any discussion on the minutes for those three meetings? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And can we get Commissioner? Yeah. Thanks, Josie. The vote passes unanimously, seven to nothing. Thank you. We are on to ratification of bills, total county bills, the amount of $970,254.81. Total county payroll, the amount of $322,751.99. Total bills and payroll, the amount of $1,293,006.80.
I move to approve the bills as stated.
Thanks, Mary. Second by Commissioner Clapper. Any discussion on our bills or payroll? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the bills and payroll, raise your hand, or say aye. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We are up to commission member disclosures. Any commissioner need to disclose anything about any of the items on today's agenda? Alright, we will move to general commission reports and future considerations. And Josie, are you ready to give your reports?
You know, Jacque, I'm driving, and I don't have much to report, so I'll save anything for next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Josie. I'll go with Trish.
I knew you were gonna come to me. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. I went to, we had a planning commission meeting last Monday. Russ Van Koke talked about the future Atlas Mill Site future planning, and that was really interesting. Just kind of went over that. As you know, Jacque, you were there last night, the Moab Area Housing Fair was at the mark. Thought it was very lucrative. I wasn't there the whole time, so I might let you speak more to that. We talked about the Affordable Housing Master Plan, and then we did open public comment on ordinances to amend Articles 3, 4, and 6 to establish noise mitigation measures on the overlay district for outfitters, services, and facilities, and that was postponed. I won't say tabled, so thank you so much. That's about it. But it was a really, really lucrative conversation, and hopefully we can move forward with something that will work for all.
Thanks, Trish. Kevin?
You know, most of the meetings I attended or things I did the past two weeks are gonna be subject to other agenda items, either this meeting or the next meeting. So the only thing I'll mention is just a brief update from the BLM. They're continuing to work through public comments for the Labyrinth Theory of Travel Plan, and they expect that the Two Rivers, this was camping, you're gonna write, plan will probably be coming out before that, so, okay. Thank you. Kevin?
The end of the month is always typically quiet for me, and with the Thanksgiving holiday, it was especially so. The Arches Special Service District did not hold its regular scheduled meeting on the 17th. Probably the highlight for me county-wise was participating in the Trail Mix float at the light show. So, always a pleasure. It's nice to see so many folks out in town.
Yeah.
That was fun.
Sarah?
I attended last night the mosquito abatement district board meeting. We're gonna have our budget hearing next Monday, if anyone's interested. And also attended the Community Renewable Energy Agency Board Meeting. And my one update from that is that previously I had said we were gonna try to have our application into the Public Service Commission by the end of this year, but the timeline's been extended because Rocky Mountain Power actually has to submit that application, and so they're aiming for March 2023. And I think that's because they've gone through a few different attorneys, and they're catching up. But the program, yeah, they're excited about it, they're making it happen, and we also voted on the Low Income Plan, and I had presented about that before, about how there were four different options for programmatic approaches to that Low Income Plan, and we voted for three of them. And so we voted, I don't know if y'all remember, we voted to, or we did not include the automatic opt-out for low-income participants. So there's other programs in place to try to help folks who are in the low-income bracket, but they won't be automatically opted out of the program, which I'm glad for. I think it's the right choice.
Thank you. Alright, Mary?
I'll make mine brief, because I've attended quite a few meetings. It used to be, mine flipped. It used to be my end of the month was really slow, and my first was really fast. And for some reason, I must have changed boards, because it's the opposite now. I attended the Economic Development Advisory Board meeting on the 16th, and a lot was talked about, a lot with childcare. It's really exciting, all the work they're doing to help with the childcare. They're looking at being able to. They're looking at being able to, uh, subsidize, uh, childcare wages to help keep people into childcare and sustainability. So it's, it was, you know, that was really exciting. And I wasn't able to go, but, uh, they had the grand opening of the new childcare that's at Synergy, which is very exciting. They're getting new software and they're, uh, the event coordinator for the summit. They're looking at having an event coordinator rather than having, uh, the, the, uh, members of the planning, the, uh, the department doing themselves, because it's so time consuming and it takes their time away. And as event coordinator wouldn't, wouldn't, would know how to do that. There was a sustainability, uh, gathering at the, um, the recycle center on the Saturday eighteenth. It was very nice. I had a legislative audit meeting, uh, Solid Waste Special Service District had a meeting on Wednesday. And, uh, we have offered a, uh, contract. We're waiting to see if the person will take it. And so we may have a new person onboard in January. I attended CCP, Canyon Country Partnership, uh, lots. That's a huge meeting. I, the highlights, I would say we're timed entries, going to continue next year. Sitlis going to build a, is looking at having a under canvas development in the Castle Valley area, which I know the town of Castle Valley is pretty upset about. Uh, UDOT said that there is going to get some federal funding to help with the mitigation at, uh, two hundred north, uh, four hundred south, so that's good news. I'll stop. So long. So much happens at that meeting. It's, I'll stop.
Two hundred north, four hundred south, Mary?
Oh, did I goof?
I don't believe that's an address.
No, I don't think, I, but I think it's the opposite.
Okay, great.
The opposite. Uh, the BLM, the, uh, Lily Cold Mine Fire is still going. And it's really very detrimental for that community. And I've skipped the rest. Uh, we had an airport meeting, some of that stuff is going to be on tonight, and we heard a lot about what went on already at the airport meeting. Uh, Jody is going to continue to be chair. I will stop there.
Thanks, Mary. Um, I definitely had a few meetings going on. Uh, I attended a whole inch a lot of trail system naming meeting with members of SAR and, uh, Trail Mix, so that the, the whole trail system, the naming can be codified. So people using apps or whatever, if they have problems on the trail, they can relay their, uh, their position more easily. And everyone kind of knows exactly where everybody's talking about. Um, so that was, that was kind of fun. Uh, we had an orientation planning meeting, um, where we planned orientation for our new electeds, which will happen next week. Uh, I also attended a Historic Preservation Committee meeting, um, where we talked about one of our, uh, coming up agenda items. We'll, we'll hear about that, the bridge dedication. We discussed board positions there, and it looks like Jody will also maintain his chairmanship of that, uh, board. So thanks, Jody. And, um, also, we talked about, we've been talking about a historic walking tour as well as like, uh, maybe historic driving tour for the county as well. Um, so we talked about soliciting comments from members of the public who would like to have say on what might be involved in historic driving or walking tour of Moab or Granite County. Um, and, uh, you can, uh, submit comments on the Granite County Connects website, which is a great place to submit comments over most things in the county. Um, also, we attended, uh, attended a Responsible Recreation Committee meeting. Um, we heard a summary of the Trail Master Program for the year. Um, it was a very successful program, lots of, lots of encounters, lots of, uh, avoided SAR incidents. Um, we discussed starting a motorized component of that, um, program next year. Uh, we also discussed engagement with popular apps, uh, like AllTrails, uh, which is, which is important for, for trail users here in Granite County. Um, and as Trish alluded to yesterday, I did attend the housing fair, which I thought was great. Kudos, um, to those folks who put that on, uh, especially Laura for organizing that and Caitlin. Um, there was a great roundtable among businesses about creating, uh, business housing, um, back and forth discussion there. And, uh, we also heard from county and city folks about what is currently in the pipeline, um, for affordable housing and housing, period. Um, and I also, uh, wanted to give an emergency manager update. Uh, an emergency manager, a full-time emergency manager has been hired. Cora Phillips started on November the twenty-eighth last week, which is great news. Um, and I will definitely be inviting her to give a report here at the commission once she's, um, gotten her feet under her and gotten established, so probably look for that early next year. And, uh, that's a much needed and welcome position. And that's all I have. So, um, we will move on with elected official reports. Gabe isn't here, is Christina online? Christina, would you like to give a report right now?
No, thanks.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Commission Admin Report. Mallory?
I don't have anything to say.
Quentin?
I did a lot of the same meetings, I don't have anything to say.
All right, so moving quickly through that. Um, we do have a citizens to be heard in five minutes, but, um, I think we will get into our first action item before then. Uh, these folks have been waiting patiently, and thank you. Uh, our first action item is the MOB Information Center Lease Agreement. And presenting on that is Chris Baird, our Strategic Development Director. And I think Chris is, are you, Chris is online, correct? Are you there, Chris?
Maybe we need to get him.
Yeah, that'd be great.
To item six.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, move item six, uh, six up to, right now, to approving ordinance amending Title Seventeen, use of public lands to prohibit aircraft takeoffs and landings outside of approved aircraft takeoff and landing areas. I would like to.
I, I thought we just had a short time before six. Was it, I mean, if that's going to be a long, were we going to have a discussion about that? Or did you just want to?
I thought we were going to postpone it.
Oh, I, okay.
So I was making a motion.
I, I, I think it would make more sense, I mean, because I think there were, there were a lot of questions and things raised, and I think we should respond to some of those.
Okay, so I will, uh.
Rescind your motion.
Rescind my motion.
All right, um. Anyone want to make a motion to, uh, move another item up? Or is Chris been contacted? All right.
Should we go to the Colorado Bridge?
Uh, yeah, I think that'd be great. Make a motion to move that one up. Uh, Mary?
Make a motion to move to item three up, the Colorado River Foot Bridge. Oh, here he is.
Okay.
Here he is.
Uh, sorry, Chris. You were up and the, uh, the action item is the MOB Information Center Lease Agreement.
Is Roxanne, or can you want to come up here? Do we have any other chairs?
Thanks, Doug. All right, uh, and this is Roxanne Beerman, uh, from CNHA.
Can you bring up the, uh, the lease, Mallory? Or somebody? See, I think, uh, this must be conversation between you and the commission, and I can just write down sort of what we decide. But I think we have to figure out the rent, the terms. The contribution from the transient room tax and, uh, anything else that you think is still outstanding. Okay, so, I mean, one of the ideas that I brought up was sort of just zeroing out the lease rent and factoring that into our transient room tax contribution. I think you had some figures in there that were updated for an employee plus the cost associated with, um, keeping the bathrooms open until ten PM. Sarah?
Continue. I, I have a, a specific discussion. I think you're still presenting.
How much was the total that you calculated for the tran- transient room tax?
Sixty thousand was the total that we came up with in terms of, uh, providing an employee, providing for keeping restrooms open late, and then, uh, the extra five thousand dollars was for us to help with the OHV permitting process at the minute.
So is that five thousand for equipment? Is that like an ongoing?
Uh, that's never been in there before. I think it was just created so we could get iPads, so that we could help people come in and take their educational course and get their permits.
So, yeah, I think we want, uh, for this purpose of the contract, if, if the terms are going to be five years, and I think we want to be, the recurring contributions, not just the one time. We can do one time as we go, as we always have, but, uh.
I, I guess the length of the contract was another thing that we were going to discuss.
The terms, that's what I mean by term.
Right. Thanks, Chris.
So, and then how much was the rent that we're currently charging?
Uh, twenty-three hundred a month, which I believe comes to twenty-seven thousand, six hundred a year.
Good.
Twenty-seven thousand.
And, uh, how much were you requesting less the five thousand for the OHV permitting?
Uh, fifty thousand dollars, I believe, uh, for a full-time employee plus their benefits. And seventy-five hundred for keeping the restrooms open late. And I'll qualify that a little bit too, uh, since COVID, keeping the restrooms open late was till nine o'clock and not ten o'clock, just because the downtown businesses do close up at nine o'clock. And, uh, from a staffing standpoint, getting somebody to come back down there and close up bathrooms for us, nine o'clock seemed to be adequate for downtown businesses.
Yeah, do you have a total on all that, though? Uh, so, I mean, the, I guess the, yeah, so we say, all right, let's take the total that you're requesting and subtract out the, uh, the rent if we cancel the rent out, and then make that contribution, which is simplification. It ends up coming out the same as the wash, with, it's, you know, resolves, uh, sending money back and forth.
But does it, does it serve us to charge rent on the facility to be able to go towards maintenance that then gets reimbursed with transient room tax?
Well, it's just going to come out in the wash. It'll be exactly the same financial position for us.
As in, we're spending transient room tax to do all the specific maintenance on?
Well, yeah, I mean, we could take more money in for rent, but then we're sending more money out. Also, the exact same amount more out, so there's no net gain in our financial position. Would make no difference in, in terms of the money that we have for maintenance.
It just, doesn't it convert a certain amount of restricted TRT money into general fund money? If we were to do it, sending money back and forth, I thought that was Sarah's point.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but I don't think that that's the intended use of that money, right? So if we're going to use the money on the MEC that we bring in, then, yeah, I mean, I, it comes into the general fund. It could be considered unrestricted, but if we're saying that we're going to keep.
Assume it's a relatively small amount compared to other things.
Twenty-seven thousand, six hundred.
And, but this agenda item is just about the lease, not the other contributions.
It has the other contributions, yeah. I mean, the lease, uh, thanks for Christina for putting it together. I mean, it doesn't really spell out any, a lot of details about the MEC operation. Or encapsulate a lot of details from the operating agreement, you know, which I would have preferred to see a little more detail about, you know, what we're looking for specifically. But in the future, we could, you know, have more workshops about that and discuss the programming and those kinds of things. Because this, this is really just a lease agreement. It does call out, um, that it's for the operation of an information center. But at the end of that first, um, paragraph, you know, it also just says in all other legal uses. So it's essentially just a lease and not really an operating agreement.
With that in mind, I would move to approve the MOB Information Center Lease with CNHA for two years for zero dollars. Well, let's, uh, talk about this.
And that, that doesn't include the back, that back.
Maybe we, maybe we could look for some consensus.
I was making a motion to start discussion.
But, yeah, I mean, either way, but I think that CNHA is looking for a longer term lease, five years, which I'm fine with. And, uh, and then if we do reduce the, um, rent rate, it, for one, it'd have to be at something, a dollar a year is usually what it's set at. And then, um, reciprocally, reciprocally reduce the TRT contribution from what your total you're requesting was, less than five thousand, whatever that is.
And based on the current rent and not on what was estimated as a possible value of, of the?
Yeah, the current rent.
So the current rent.
So if you have, I think I did see, I should have written it down. I think in one of your emails, you had a fifty-five thousand or fifty-six thousand dollar figure.
I think the fifty-five thousand, if we're taking out the five thousand, that was just the one time for the OHV deal.
Okay, so.
But if this, if this lease before us is lacking these operation agreements, that's kind of why I was leaning towards a shorter term lease, so we could go ahead with the budget process for this year and then develop that operating agreement in the future.
Well, we could do it separate. I mean, that's the way it's been for a long time, is that the operating agreement and the lease have been separate.
And, Chris, I already misspoke a little bit about that. The fifty thousand was for, for an employee, then the seventy-five hundred for keeping the bathrooms open late. If we want that to continue to be included in the lease, so we're going to take that up.
Well, I think that at this point, we need to have any kind of financial contribution involved in a contract somehow. I mean, that's the, the gist of moving away from the handshake and formal agreements and getting more in line with generally acceptable accounting standards.
And that contract would be this lease or separate?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's easier to just do it here and say, all right, for the next five years, we're going to make this contribution. Whatever. So, I mean.
But it, I mean, if it's for five years, do we, it seems like this needs some, some work then, because we do factor in a cost of living increase. Are we, is it just a blanket fee or contribution for the next five years?
How does the commission feel about, uh, a separate operating plan that outlines a contribution?
So doing a one dollar a year lease and then?
Yeah.
Creating a separate operating plan?
Yeah.
But, but.
We'd have to do that tonight.
Yes, they, they, they need to get their budget done. They need to know how much money they're going to have to do their budget, right? So we have to, right?
I believe that the, the agreement expires on the thirty-first of the month.
Yeah, so we need to.
So it's not, I mean, it was never, I hate to say it, but it was never really signed. The, uh, you got a memo, but there was no actual signed agreement. So, I mean, it's all informal at this point. I've, you know, I'm not super worried about it, but we don't have a formally signed lease agreement. We have a memo indicating a renewal, but nobody actually signs any contracts renewing the lease.
We don't. It's true. I have a signed letter from the county saying that they wanted, that they would, um, continue our lease for another five years, so that is what we have. But we did not, um, have them actually come up with it, another copy of the lease that, that we would all sign. But we have.
My point is, I don't think that, you know, if, there's any hard deadline, you know, that we have to look, look to, as long as we get this done relatively soon.
So, speak, speaking of relatively soon then, so what blanks do we need to fill in here to make a motion and passes?
For us to build a budget, I mean, if we say we're gonna just do us with rent right now, then that doesn't give me any indication about what I need to do in, in my, in my budget nor them. So I would think that trying to nail down all the financial components of this in this agreement is going to be preferable for budgeting purposes.
Okay, but, and then so, but it's, I, I, I'll admit, you know, I was defer, you know, going to rely on other commissioners to sort this out. Um, there's some blanks in the lease, and we have to, you know, before we have the motion, we have to fill in those blanks. So how many blanks are, and yes, most of them are dollar amounts?
We've got the rent.
Okay.
Here, and then the additional rent is our contribute, you know, that's where we kind of spell out the county's contribution.
Okay, so that's part of a motion, but not part of the, this lease?
It, it is part of this lease, and so.
I see two things that needs to be changed. I see two things that needs to be changed or discussed today.
I mean, we could, we could just take direction and come back with a clean version at the next meeting too, if you want, and not try to wordsmith it in real time, but the the terms of the agreement, wherever that is, needs to be looked into, the rent amount, any additional contribution to the county. I think that pretty much covers it, doesn't it, in terms of what this is?
Not really for us. A couple more things, and just I'll mention that we have been trying for a year to get a new lease worked out. So I'm sorry that it's at the last minute that we have to try and iron out all of these things, but one of the other things that's in the current sample lease is that the termination clause basically says that the county can terminate the lease at any time. We would like to at least have some kind of advance notice, and there are six-month notice and ninety-day notice, something. There's also a couple of added maintenance requirements in there for parking lots, snow removal, and winterizing sprinkler systems that we have never done before, which is obviously added expenses for us. Yeah, let's see. I think that that might be the only other two things that we're not talking about in terms of rent and T R T support.
So has Sean been plowing the park?
As far as I'm sure, well, so Sean has, he's plowing?
He, we actually spoke with Sean, and it sounds like we don't have anything to plow that, and we haven't been, so.
They come, they come over and do all the sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
Little front thing, the parking lot. I mean, they'll, they'll do where people park. It has never really been where we needed a big plow in.
Sorry, what's that?
Come up, you need, we need to have it come up.
It's never really been where I've never seen a plow in the parking lot. But they do come over with their front, their little four-wheeler thing with the front plow and do all the sidewalks. They do that in the mornings, and then if it's snowy throughout the day, then my staff goes out and shovels during the day.
And I think this is just my interpretation, and I don't have any true historical context being there, but I've, I get the sense that that part has always been like a courtesy, if you will, like shoveling the sidewalks, and that perhaps it's something that could continue, but I don't think we have the capacity right now to formally take on like plowing the parking lot.
But it's, and then also as far as winterizing the sprinkler systems, the county has always done that since, well, since I've been here since two thousand and eleven.
And I think that that, that would be okay. They definitely have the ability and have been doing it as a courtesy. But talking maintenance, I think that that one is doable for the county to take on.
Well, yeah, they've always have, so.
Thanks. August Online has his hand up. Did you wanna, do you wanna make a comment on this, August?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thanks, thanks all for taking this on today. I just added it in the chat. There's was a couple of discussions about the numbers for the currently budgeted twenty-twenty-three T R T contribution line items. So I just put those in the chat for reference for today's discussion. Just wanted to make sure that that was made available for everybody's discussion today. And just wanted to say that support our engagement with C N H A here for visitor education and have enjoyed working with them tremendously. That's kind of all I have to say on that.
Great, thank you, August.
Yep.
Can I have clarification? So these, these numbers, the thirty-eight thousand, the seven thousand, and the five thousand is in, do I understand, August, is that in your, are in the budget for the travel council?
That's currently budgeted in the tentative twenty-twenty-three budget out of the tourism promotion component of T R T.
If I can comment in that, is what we were asking for in terms of what would actually replace and provide an employee, the thirty-eight thousand would minimally pay a salary, but not benefits and that sort of thing. And that's why the thirty-eight thousand plus the seven is what we've been getting the last couple of years, and we do always operate in the red at the visitor center.
So you were asking for, what was it, fifty-one?
And I can't recall if it's fifty or fifty-one, but yes, to actually pay for an employee. And then the actual cost of keeping the visitor center open late was about seventy-five hundred dollars based on this year. So yeah, that's where we were coming up with those numbers.
So we're about twelve thousand short of what you're asking for. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I'm adding up, is that sixty-three thousand?
Well, here's, I mean, here's the email, the previous math we said.
Okay.
You have forty-seven thousand, eight seventy-five plus seventy-five hundred equals fifty-five thousand, three seventy-five. And then if we add the five thousand on top of that, it brings it to sixty thousand, three seventy-five. So the ongoing, it looks to me like the ongoing request that you have is the fifty-five thousand, three seventy-five.
Correct. Is that what that?
So, I mean, like I say, the, part of the issue with increasing the budget line item now, you know, is that decreasing it's pretty easy, but increasing it is, is a little more difficult. But, you know, it would be easier to sort of drop out that revenue line, the general fund. And then, like I say, charge a dollar a year, whatever, and then take this fifty-five, three seventy-five, and subtract the twenty-seven, six, and that would be the contribution.
I think, I do have a concern with that, because though it might only be twenty-seven thousand dollars this year, that we would be basically taking from the general fund and giving towards M I C operations instead of the travel, the T R T money. Over time, that's, I mean, four years, it's a hundred thousand dollars. That's a significant amount of money that we could be spending of T R T for M I C operations. So what I'm saying is that I think there's value in having a rent and then making a contribution from the T R T funds. But I know that's complicated, and we're trying to do this on fly, so, but over time, that's a large amount of money.
Okay, so it just sounds like the things that have to be decided quickly are things that affect budgeting, both for the county and for the M I C, right? And so it's just these, these dollar numbers. Once, if we make a decision about that, if there's other things in the lease that need to be adjusted, that can be done at a later date, is that?
And I don't know if it takes the whole council to adjust some of these other things in the lease, or if that's something else will work out, but it's the rent and the T R T assistance that has to be approved here.
So, so, so one idea would be to make the T R T contribution what you requested and make the rent what you have been paying. So I think that satisfies, that, that seems simple to me, and I, and I think in terms of dollar amounts that it's pretty close to all the other things we've been discussing. So to me, that, that seems close enough.
All right, so then twenty-three hundred per month, one zero one, fifty-five, three seventy-five, the parenthetical, and the reimbursement, three point oh two. Then if we scroll down, they showed you the not sure what to say about the snow plowing, but we can take the script part out, it sounds like.
Sounds good. Yep.
What else, Roxanne?
The termination clause?
Six months.
I, I think making that six months makes sense. Uh, yeah, come on up forward if you wanna.
And just a reminder, can we change the closing about, I mean, if you're gonna put it in the lease that we're required to stay open, can we change it to nine P M instead of ten P M?
Very reasonable.
Right, I, I agree. Yeah, I think that's, that's fair.
Thank you. And not to beat this forever, but the snow plowing requirement, apparently nobody's been snow plowing, but I'm not sure when the lease that we are saying we're going to, then we're liable if lot isn't plowed and there's an accident or a problem, because we have not plowed it before. We don't have equipment. We don't have any means by which to plow the parking lot.
And I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I get the sense we would want the same of do we want to take that on when we have, we haven't before, and I think it would be worthy talking to other staff and getting a sense before we take on something that it sounds like we don't have the capacity to formally do, and it's more of a, of good faith gesture, gesture, gesture that has been done in the past.
Is it, is it possible the city has just come in there and gotten it before? No.
Maybe it doesn't snow there.
So I'm, I'm just wondering if some of these details about the lease can be worked out, you know, outside this meeting. You know, we can make a motion saying our intention to sign a lease with the following dollar amounts in it. And then that's enough for the budgeting, and then the other stuff can happen later. And we have all those. You filled the blanks in, Chris? I'm sorry, I can't see very well.
Well, let's, let's write, let's, I'll just write down everything that we changed and do, this is just Let's go back up. So three point oh one, we're gonna do twenty-three hundred a month. Three point oh two, we're gonna do the fifty-five, three seventy-five for the reimbursement costs.
Roxanne, was there something else?
Yes, but I'm hoping this is something else we maybe could just work out.
Later, okay.
There is something in there. They're just saying that basically we absolutely cannot renew this lease. And I don't know if there's some reason why we want to have a cut-off point, or if it's just trying to say that we're not going to automatically renew the lease. We would renegotiate or whatever at the end of this lease.
Well, there are, there are statutory limitations for how long a government can carry a lease, which is typically five years. Yeah, I'd honor that one, so.
I actually think the language in the contract was that it was extend.
That we couldn't extend.
We're talking the same thing.
Thank you.
It's very general.
That's
Practice across the board that five years is the longest that we have a lease or any agreement for that matter generally. And then it has to be renegotiated. All right, so let's scroll down again, issue two. Maintenance repair, four point oh two. And then we're gonna strike, including winterizing the irrigation sprinkler system.
We're gonna keep the sprinkler system in, aren't we?
I'm, I'm just wondering whether the sprinkler system is something that doesn't need to be resolved in this meeting, and we can just make a motion about the dollar amounts and move on. That's
Well, what I'm trying to do is get this approved, so that we can assign it, don't come back to you again.
Okay.
So as long as, you know, we, I list this all out, somebody can say, I make a motion to that, but no, so I'm gonna say strike the winterizing of the sprinkler and irrigation system. And go down to the termination clause. So that's subsection C.
There should be some notice in there, and I think six months would be good.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make a note, what main provision is that, I mean, she can tell. Nine oh two, so we're looking at nine oh two subsection C. And rewrite that to include six-month notice. All right, anything else?
That does it.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion to that effect?
Who's taking minutes? Oh, like watching the video? Yes, I mean, maybe you just say it all clearly at once, and then
So yeah, section, or section three point oh one, the rent will be twenty-three hundred a month. Section three point oh two, the county's reimbursement will be fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. Section four point oh two, we're gonna strike maintenance associated with the sprinkler and irrigation system. Section nine point oh two, subsection, subsection C, we're going to include a six-month noticing requirement for termination. Say that. Oh, yeah, which one was that? Where was that?
Three point
That was in three oh two, awesome. What is the, that twenty-eighty-seven hour advisor? So, go. I'm writing down also changing ten P M to nine P M.
Okay, so you've just finished listing, listing everything, and I can make the motion?
Although, I'm just not clear what the twenty-eighty-seven hour advisor, you know what that means?
I'm sorry, which one was it?
That twenty-eighty-seven hour advisor language?
Well, that was just from how many hours is a full-time employee? That's how you kind of figure out what it costs, and that's where the twenty, twenty-eighty-seven hours comes from.
So I, I, okay, I move to approve the Moab Information Center lease with the Canyonland National History Association incorporating the edits just outlined by Chris.
Second.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Second by Mary. Further discussion?
Roxanne, did you have something further?
I, I, the only thing we didn't resolve is the snow removal, and is that still something we're gonna resolve later on, or are we leaving that in?
Or at least the sidewalk?
At least the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Yes, and I, I think the sidewalk, troubling, it sounds like that is very doable.
Yeah. So is that, I mean, they changed the lease or it's already in there?
I think right now, do you mean this one or the one in place right now?
When we're about to, I just wanted
Well, the city, the city should be responsible for sidewalks, shouldn't they, around the perimeter?
They do.
So you're talking about
The sidewalks on the M I C property itself. And the county guys come over and just do it really quick, and then we maintain it throughout the day.
And I'm not sure on that one also if we want to put that specific language. I'd want to talk to staff, because I think there's also a factor of talking about going out after hours for the bathrooms that also would fall to us in the same sense of if there was a snowstorm.
But it, but it seems like we could come to some sort of agreement about snow removal without it being in the lease, so.
That's what I, that's what I'm thinking.
I agree.
If you take it out of the lease, we'll take it out right now. We'll figure out the rest.
I think it would be highly unusual to sign a lease where the landlord were responsible for shoveling sidewalks, quite honestly.
No, but we're just saying
I don't think you have that in the lease that you were responsible, but we don't want it in the lease that we're responsible. I think we could still work that one out.
So just remove the sections about snow removal and sprinkler system from the lease.
Well, I think that, you know,
I mean, we could leave it
Snow removal has to stay in there, in my opinion.
We could leave it in. You're responsible to figure it out. In being responsible, you coordinate with the county, and maybe we pick up that part or whatever, but.
Well, we could, but like I say, that's, you know, not typical at all for any lease.
Well, it sounds like it has been happening historically.
It, it has not been in the lease before that we are required to it, to do it. I don't think that we'd have something in the lease that said that you're required to do it. I just, it has not been in the lease before, so I don't know why it would need to be added to the lease now.
Yeah, it's just an issue, you know, that I think what Mallory's getting at, that we need to talk to staff. And it, you know, those types of things would be low priority. So if there were big snow removal needs elsewhere in the county, that's not gonna to be a place where they go, I can guarantee that. And so that's a big part of the issue, is that it could be, if they have the time and they can make it a priority, they'll do it, but if not, you know, it's not going to happen, um, because we've got much, you know, more significance, more removal generally to deal with.
Okay, so it sounds like we leave the lease as is, and then the mid can work out an agreement for the county to do, do that work? Is that, am I right?
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'm not convinced that we should be responsible for it, quite honestly, but.
I agree, but I do think.
Right, but, but the lease, I said leave the lease as is, which means they're responsible for it, but the way they're going to fulfill that responsibility is that ask us to do it, and we'll do it. Okay, that's right. So the, okay, so Kevin's motion.
I'm going to write that one down. Not now.
Yeah, I think we're good. Okay, so I do have a motion on the table by Kevin and a second by, was it Mary?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to call for a vote, uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All right.
Aye.
Thanks, Josie. Motion passes unanimously, thank you, thank you Roxanne and, and Chris, and that was a
That was painful.
hard process. I am going to, uh, open up our second, uh, public comment period, which we normally have at six PM, um, if anyone wants to come forward and make a comment at this point, you may, and we'll maintain the same rules as we had previously. Yeah, Stephen.
Hello, my name's Stephen Stocks, I'm actually in, here in a different capacity today, I'm here on behalf of Woody's Tavern, uh, Woody's Tavern recently had some issues with the DABS, um, without the support from the commission, this is item eleven for you folks, without the support of the public and everyone else, uh, they would have been shut down, and Sherry Beck, uh, the owner, she was brought to tears, she was scared, she was panicked, uh, she reached out to you folks, and you folks were wonderful and drafted a letter, and it was fantastic, and so there's not very many things, a lot of times when a lot of the laws come out, you don't have recourse, this was something that because of public outcry and because of public support, it saved her entire life. So from the bottom of her heart, uh, she wanted me to come down and, and say thank you so much, she wanted to come down in person, but she couldn't, but again, thank you guys so much for all you guys' push and, and the public and everyone else, it really made the difference.
Awesome, thank, thank you Stephen on behalf of Sherry, and that, that's one thing that the whole community came together behind, and I didn't hear a single voice in opposition to supporting Woody's on that.
If Woody shut down it, I'd have to leave town.
I think a few people might find themselves in that, but, uh, thank you Stephen, anyone else care to come, yes, sir?
Um, I'm here to comment on last week's land use ordinance that was being discussed. Yes, my name is Dustin McKinley, I'm the general manager of Crump Priests Moab Ford, first want to thank you all for your service to the county. As of November first, twenty twenty-two, the dealership is a hundred percent locally owned and operated, I currently have eighteen full-time employees and two part-time employees with special needs, all employees have benefits, year-round work, have never missed a payroll date, I make a large contribution to tax revenue with the business I conduct, we have employee housing available to staff that we have rented or purchased on the company's time, we are currently under contract and in escrow for the land just north of me to clear and make a state-of-the-art Bronco Experience Center, off-road shop, quick lane, and RV repair shop, this is all backed by Ford Motor Company, this is, this will not only beautify another property in Grand County, but increase tax revenue and increase, uh, Grand County local jobs by twelve to fifteen people, this is a four to five million dollar investment into Grand County that we are willing to make because we believe in small business and the residents it supports through jobs and the goods and services we provide, I'm asking the committee to vote against the land use code completely, it is not good for Grand County local business and especially the people who reside here, or at a minimum rewrite, rewrite it completely and lean on the local businesses that have made the investment into Grand County and the employees that reside in Grand County, we plead with our governing body to support us as business owners as we support Grand County and most importantly its residents, whether it's an organic beef farm, a fencing company, a car dealership like myself, or a rental business, small business is good for Grand County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else, uh, care to come forward and make a comment? Is there anyone online, Quinn, with a raised hand? Do we see? Oh, yeah, yeah, come ahead, Nick. Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Nick Oldham. Barack Obama once said, if people cannot trust their government to do the job for which it exists, to protect them and to promote their common welfare, welfare, all else is lost. Now, Monday, November twenty-eighth, there was an interesting planning and zoning meeting, this meeting was interesting in that a tremendous distrust of our local government was made apparent by a range of citizens, similar to tonight, a new label is being proposed, noise-producing business, now it sounds reasonable enough to separate these businesses from residential areas, however, not in the proposed way, in addition to putting the screws to off-road businesses, these change, changes will eliminate small startup auto shops, and strangely enough, they even dictate chicken coops and dog houses cannot be built within a tenth of a mile from any existing structure, this new label can be applied to a wide variety of businesses or events as the commission sees fit, this is in addition to creating a contradictory framework of rules for these businesses to follow and exist in, in this framework, no proposal can physically meet all the guidelines, and even if they did, approval would still be left to the discretion of the commission. This is all proposed without collaboration from affected business types, undoubtedly resulting in unattended consequences, and much more importantly, leaving effective solutions unexplored. The discretion of the commission, why are so many county processes coming down to the discretion of the commission, why do you seek to wield the power of making so many individual decisions, we have watched this group exercise bias on special events, housing projects, and trail access, this power-seeking has created so much conflict in our community and has accomplished so little, I do not trust this commission, your policies have increased your power at the expense of progress. My fellow patriots in the sky, good luck.
Thanks, Nick. Uh, anyone else care to come forward and make a comment? Uh, someone online? Benjamin Burr.
Yeah, thanks, um, my name is Benjamin Burr, I am the executive director of the Blue Ribbon Coalition, and I want to speak to, I believe it's item number six, which is the proposed ordinance to amend Title seventeen to restrict takeoff and landings of backcountry aircraft, and I just want to add, I mean, my, I've often read about the work of my organization in local news stories there in Moab, and you guys often talked about us as if we're an outside interest group, um, we've been contacted by many members who live in the Moab area or recreate in the Moab area about this proposed ordinance, and, um, they don't support it, um, my family also has deep roots in Moab, my grandpa actually grew up in Moab, and he used to go around in the sixties and rebuild fences, uh, for ranchers, and it was from that experience that he got the idea to start a helicopter company, and so it was actually the terrain about, around Moab that encouraged him to get into the aviation business, and he did start a successful helicopter business, and he got involved in everything, life flights, heavy lift, firefighting, logging, anything that you use a helicopter to do, um, but he ran all that business so that he could actually use his helicopters to go and explore and go on adventures, and I went on several of those with him, um, throughout the state of Utah, and so while the ordinance appears to try to strike a balance where there is allowed use for commercial operators, um, all of those commercial operators are also the same pilots and aviation enthusiasts who also like to go and recreate at this, um, in their free time, and if you think about the services that these aviation providers provide for the county, uh, these are often search and rescue operations, I read the Grand County Sheriff's Department had three helicopter-based rescues in one weekend recently, um, they're providing vital important services, they bring a really unique skill set, I think it sends a really terrible message to this group of folks that come and provide valuable services.
Time management.
To pass this ordinance, thanks, and we oppose it, we hope you don't pass it and you give it more time.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else care to come forward and make a comment? Anyone online with a raised hand? All right, we will move on with our, uh, action items, uh, we're up to item three, Colorado Footbridge Rededication, uh, Historical Preservation Committee, thank you for sticking with us, Jody.
Oh, no problem. Appreciate the opportunity to come and say to you guys for a little bit, uh, and entertain the proposition of rededicating the Colorado Footbridge as the Colorado River Gartshack Bridge, um, it is a unique little tidbit of local history, uh, that took a rather mundane program operated by the military to guard internal infrastructure in the US during World War Two, and it ended up being a story that was one of the first stories of Moab history that I heard about when I came here about twenty-one years ago. Three men, locals, uh, all of them well-known, and the families are still here, Ellis, Holyoaks, and Ivans. Three men were guarding that bridge, one of them happened to die while on duty when rockfall from the rim above came down and crushed them, um, there are some interesting urban legends that have gone along with that, like the body is still there, it's haunted, you know, there, there, it's, it's a, it's this neat little piece of, of Moab history, and we would like, uh, you guys to consider rededicating that bridge to honor those three men that were working there, um, and just so we can get that story out to more people who use that bridge all the time, and I'll let you guys go from there, I appreciate the opportunity.
Awesome, thank you.
Or if anybody's got any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Yeah, does anyone have a question or a comment for Jody? Kevin? Um, are there other documented cases of people dying from rockfall like that in Grand County that you're aware of?
Um, I am not aware of any, but I'm sure there has been.
And also, and I didn't mean falling from a rock, but, you know, just being on the ground, minding your own business, and the rock comes and gets you.
Um, there's, I don't know about specifically Grand County, there's other, uh, and, and if you go through photographic archives, and there's some online, uh, that the state runs, you'll find various places where cars have been crushed, and whether or not people were in those cars when that happened, I don't know, and I know of several instances like that for both Grand County and San Juan County.
And I'd add that the rock that fell on the Gartshack is still right next to the bridge, it's a prominent.
It's still there, we would be proposing to put a small plaque up there, nothing too, too gaudy or distracting, but just to, to memorialize that contribution and that little bit of history.
And there's a, there's a copy of that plaque or mock-up of it in our.
Yeah, do you know there is one typo in there that is, that will be fixed before we ever did anything.
Right, Jody, thank you.
As long as it doesn't get in the way of the junkie.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Jody, I, I think, I think this is great, I'm on, I'm on the HPC myself, and we've discussed this at a number of meetings, and I, I think anytime you can bring local history and lore like this into the forefront, um, is a, a cool thing, and, and, you know, visitors see that, and they'll, they might dig deeper, and it also, uh, helps promote our Historical Preservation Committee, which, which is doing good work, and it's kind of in the, in the background sometimes, so I'm definitely in favor.
Uh, this isn't a question for Jody, but just where the, uh, the fund, the minor funds for the, uh, plaque are coming from, do you know, is that from the commission budget, or?
I, I believe so, and I would even put up part of my discretionary for that, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, yeah.
We can split it between us all.
Right.
Well, I, I will make a motion, I move to approve the dedication of the Colorado River Footbridge to Otto Ellis, uh, Alvy Holly Oak, and Neil Westwood.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion, uh, by Commissioner again, and a second by Commissioner Hadeen, any other discussion on this side? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Josie?
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, seven to nothing. Great, thanks, Jody. Up to, uh, agenda item number four, proposed ordinance establishing the, uh, is that, have a typo on here, the twenty-twenty-two consolidated fee schedule, and, or twenty-twenty-three consolidated fee schedule and repealing and replacing ordinance number, uh, six forty-nine, um, Commissioner Administrator, Mallory?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia, who took this on and did a bunch of great work, so she gets a bunch of presentation.
Okay, so, I mean, I did all the work, everybody did all the work, so, uh, each department kind of went through their consolidated fees, and we took a look at what they needed to adjust to either, you know, kind of bring it up to date, or to, um, set things better in line with best practice, and we did kind of line out there why each fee was changed, and, um, if you have any questions on that, or if you want me to go through them, I can, but if you want to just look at it.
I had, I mean, great work, I'm supportive of all the fee changes, um, but I was looking at, this is the first time I'm kind of looking at stage rental stuff, and I noticed that the draft was changed to limit locations to within Grand County, which I, I thought was maybe a little narrow, and maybe it could include also the eight-four-five-three-two area, or maybe you guys can give insight on why it was.
I changed that, um, because I'd initially, what I looked at, um, the draft said something limiting it to eight-four-five-three-two, but I figured, um, you know, it's a county purchase, if somebody, say, Thompson, wanted to use it, that we wouldn't want to shut that off and say, you're too far away.
I, yeah, my proposal would be, say, within Grand County and the eight-four-five-three-two area, because that includes the Spanish Valley and the mountains, like people wanted to stay there.
That makes sense.
What they're going to do with the stage, but, and I had another thought on this, um, because it, it, let's see, I think that charging per hour for technicians does something, because it covers stage setup if the stage has to be taken really far away, I'm thinking of places like Rio Mesa at the Intrada Ranch, it's up the river road, it's a great location, I don't know, they might at some point want the stage, but it takes like an hour and a half to get up there, just for example, but it's still a beautiful and great, so I noticed in the draft it was changed from per hour to per termination.
But, um, and I also made that change, just with the thought of making sure that what we're charging is justifiable and that we want to subsidize, um, services, and that if it were hourly in addition to, say, the one thousand dollars a day, um, initial day, that that could add up to be quite a bit of money, especially because staff or technicians, depending on some circumstances, could have to be there as long as the stage is being used, um, so I guess that was my thinking in terms of making sure it's justifiable and looking at some hourly rates, what that could be, um, and then what could be covered in the thousand dollars. I think this is honestly going to be a first-time thing, and that, uh, if there is an amendment during the year, it might be something that you all need to look at again.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it passing as is, that maybe in the future adding something like extra delivery fee if it's more than half an hour away or something, you know, something like that, but I'm excited we have a stage to rent.
Yeah, I think that's great, too.
Um, I'm, I'll make a motion.
Thanks, sir.
Are folks generally good with including eight-four-five-three-two and Grand County?
Uh, I'm fine.
Remind me which B was that associated?
The B was that associated?
Stage rental, rental, the geographic area to go to, it's kind of minor, but, um.
A good catch.
I move to approve the ordinance to establish the twenty-twenty-three consolidated fee schedule and repeal and replace ordinance six forty-nine, example, recreational area fee conditional, fees conditional on the Bureau of Land Management's approval, with the caveat that we changed under the stage rental agreement, the geographic range to include eight-four-five-three-two. the geographic range to include 84532 as well as Grand County.
Thanks, Sarah. All right. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner Clapper. Any other discussion on the fees?
Glad to see some of them go down as well.
And one of the ones, one you brought up was the trailering fee to sand flats went away. I think that's important for encouraging trailering up there. All right. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Alicia. Item Five, Approving Independent Contractor Agreements with Laurel Hagen Esquire to File Change Applications for County Water Rights and Draft a Revised Water Source Protection Ordinance. I know Kenny Attorney Sloan had to leave before seven. Is she still on or?
I am here. These are super simple. These are just items that I started but did not get done. Chris Baird is going to manage them after I'm gone, but I think most of the billables can get done before my term ends. So one of these is for moving the points of diversion and updating our beneficial uses for water rights. They're really old, and we have points of diversions from old wells all over the county. Looks like we're going to move most of those to the airport based on this needed uses up there. And then the other one is updating our groundwater source protection ordinance. We do have one currently in code. It's pretty general and refers to an EPA protection process that doesn't exist. And I have started a draft, but Laurel's a water expert. She's going to wrap it up. That'll probably happen by, you know, first couple of months, and then Chris will help manage it and move it along.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, it's all budgeted, and it's $5,000 per contract. So these are within our procurement code.
Okay.
I move to approve the independent contract agreement with Laurel Hagen ESQ to file change applications for county water rights and draft a revised water source protection ordinance.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll second that, and thank you, Chrissy, for getting this done so that we can put them to bed.
Yes, they needed to be done.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Hedin. Any further discussion on the contracts? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clapper abstaining on to item six. And that is the item approving ordinance amending Title Seventeen, Use of Public Lands to Prohibit Aircraft Takeoffs and Landings Outside of Approved Aircraft Takeoff and Landing Areas. Kevin?
Okay, so, let me give some background about how this came about. And I think those people were at the airport board, meaning I'm going to have to repeat myself. So we've been asked, you know, we often, we talk with the BLM a lot, and some of that's saying, you know, we see a need for more revised management here or there. And, you know, sometimes they accommodate us, sometimes they say they don't have the resources. So one of the things that has come up repeatedly over the past few years has been, you know, aircraft issues, and in particular where they land. They have said they would like to work on that, but again, it's hard to get the resources. And then especially, and then when we asked them, well, what's the current policy? It took a long time to get an answer back, because I think there was disagreement within the BLM. At first, the answer was, well, we've got this motor, we've got our travel plan, and so that restricts motorized vehicles, which would include aircraft to roads and things like that. But eventually, they decided that, no, that the travel plan doesn't apply, and that they don't have any policy at all. So the question arises then, you know, what happens if the BLM is silent on an issue? They're not permitting it, and they're not prohibiting what happens. And there's a provision in federal law called the, similar to the Crimes Act, that says, well, in those cases, state and local laws, you know, come into play. You know, federal law trumps state and local laws, but when the federal government is silent, those things. And that's, that's a rule from the 1950s. It's typically applied to things like firearm possession and age of consent, maybe alcohol laws, that kind of thing, because there might not be a specific federal statute on that. So so putting two and two together, if Grand County has a policy, or has a pre-existing policy on over flights or tours, then if the BLM's not going to say anything, then ours comes into play. And so does Grand County have a policy? Well, in 1994, we did, we, in response to, you know, the beginnings of scenic flights originating as scenic helicopter flights originating in Spanish Valley, we adopted a policy which basically says that those types of uses have to occur at the airport. And then it left in place, you know, put in a long list of exceptions for just, you know, all the existing uses that they could think of, which was seismic exploration, filming, search and rescue, and so on. So the idea behind this ordinance was, you know, the way the 94th thing was written is it got stuck in the land use code, so it only applies to private land. But if we, you know, were to extend it to all the county, then that would be the county's proposal in the event that BLM doesn't act. So that's the idea. I do think, you know, the, before this would, proposal would have an effect, the BLM would actually have to agree with the legal reasoning. And so, you know, nothing was expected to happen soon, which is why I think we, or I failed to, you know, put enough background in the agenda item. And I think a lot of, you know, people, you know, reading just what was in the agenda, came into the conclusion that something might happen as soon as this meeting, which was never the intent. And so I apologize for failing to perceive, you know, that that would happen. To me, this was a dry issue, but, you know, I had my blinders on, was thinking of it in the context of this ongoing conversation with the BLM, and that this is something that might start to matter, you know, a few years, months, or years from now, once the BLM sorts out where they handle this issue, because we want to do it with the BLM. So that's the rough thing, the rough idea. The ordinance that exists was an attempt to not break any new ground, just take our existing policy that applies to private lands throughout the county and adapt it to, you know, more types of aircraft that didn't exist in 1994, and say that it also applies to state and SITL. I think our hope is definitely that it never comes to this, that, you know, this is, in some ways, just you know, we're hoping that the BLM, who should be managing the public lands, will, you know, act. Now, one question arises, you know, why aren't we happy with the current situation where the BLM doesn't have a policy? And then sort of by default, people land wherever they want to. I just think that that doesn't work. I know people who are, you know, if you're in the user group affected, then it seems like a great policy. But I think on balance, it's hard to think of a case where that has worked with any other type of use. It used to be you could go backpacking in national, like, needles whenever you wanted to, but it started to get too crowded, and they created zones, and they created limits. The river, the river used to be all open. You could take trips down Cataract when you pleased. Eventually, that's, it became clear that wasn't working, and there's a permit system. When I first moved to Grand County, it was legal to drive anywhere you wanted to. You know, you could take your Jeep or motorcycle and just go cross-country. That was legal, but eventually, you know, realized that, you know, especially as there become to be more and more people that use, that use doesn't work. So I think the idea behind this and behind our conversations with the BLM over the past years is we've been pressing them to say, hey, aircraft takeoff and landing, so that same reasoning applies. You know, there are use conflicts here. You know, someone needs to figure out, you know, what the right, where these things should be allowed, where they shouldn't be allowed. And that's the kind of decision that the BLM typically makes, so please start making it. But nothing has happened. So if the BLM doesn't act, and I guess if I forget to say it later, when I, if I'm, to the extent that I'm criticizing the BLM here, I'm criticizing, you know, whoever makes the budgeting decisions in Washington DC or the state office. I, you know, I think the local BLM staff does a great job with the resources that they have. But we have so many visitors in Moab, it's hard for them to really keep up with use. In any case, we want the BLM to make a policy on this. But if they don't, the question is what happens? And it seems like the two easy options are, you know, everything's wide open. That's what we've been dealing with now, and I don't think it's trending in the right direction. Or, you know, we could shift to some county policy. You know, we could have tried to construct a county policy that went area by area and basically, you know, pretend that we're federal land managers and make some decisions. But that's, that's really the BLM's job to do. And so what made it into the packet was just, in a very, as a most straightforward way as possible, extend the existing decisions that were made in 1994 about helicopter tours, scenic helicopter tours, to these other things. So that's, that's the background.
I have to leave, guys, but Kevin, I did want to clarify, because you mentioned tours a couple of times, that we don't have any authority to regulate airspace or aviation and airspace. So all we have authority to do is regulate takeoffs and landings, which is what this ordinance does. And Kevin knows that. I know he's trying to get a lot of comments in. I just want to clarify it, because there has been a lot of misinformation, the emails we've gotten, and also on social media, and some comments that were directed at me. And so we're not trying to regulate airspace here. Also, interesting note, SITL does already prevent takeoffs and landings on their property. And I do know of at least one incident that happened this year where they were notified about an illegal takeoff or landing, I can't remember which, and they were taking actions to enforce it. So it's not a radical concept. As Kevin discussed, I have to leave from here, but thanks, guys.
Yeah, things are that clarification. Yeah, it is certainly true that once things are in the air, then it's very clear that EPA has the authority, it's not BLM or us. And so the only tool we have for regulating these are takeoffs and landings, which is what, again, what we did in 1994. We didn't tell helicopter scenic flights where they could fly. We just said, you have to operate out of the airport. And I talked with, you know, the person who was behind the 1994 ordinance, John Hartley, is still in town. I spoke with him the day, just to make sure I was remembering this history right. And he confirmed that, you know, the basic idea there was that, you know, aircraft shouldn't be operating out of Spanish Valley or nearby. You know, it made sense to put it up at the airport. And then making exceptions for types of helicopter use that occur relatively infrequently, like, you know, support for films and things like that. So I was going to say, I agree with, you know, I think there are some questions. In my mind, this was not something that was going to take in effect anytime soon, so it wasn't important to get it exactly right, because there would be plenty of future. It was, its purpose was to start, get the BLM moving. And I think with all the publicity around this, you know, maybe we've accomplished that much in a much bigger way than we thought was possible. So I think, you know, tabling it, to think about it and see whether we want to try to make it more detailed or not, I think that makes sense. So I agree with that. But I do think, you know, we've been kind of dithering on this issue for a long time. And I think if you look at the history of Grand County, it's full of missed opportunities where something starts to happen, and the county doesn't take action until, you know, most of the horses. We don't close the barn door until most of the horses are already out. It's happened with overnight accommodations. I think the UTV issue got away from us. So I do think we should, you know, we shouldn't just sit back and relax. I think we need to, you know, maybe write a letter to the BLM, somebody like that, saying, hey, you know, we are eager to act on this. If you don't, we will just try to prod the BLM to do something. So I'll stop there and see what the rest of you think.
All right. Trish, looks like you had a.
Just my thought, entabling it, is it feasible test to go through our minutes and extract all of the organizations that made public comment and pull them into a working group? Just throwing that out. I wrote down a few of them, but it just seems like that would be a more effective manner. Okay, cool.
I think it's reasonable to table it, given the postponer, postponer. Given what I see, we've received so many comments that were kind of misinformed. They didn't have the right information even. They were talking about airstrips that we weren't even considering regulating. And so I think getting more information out there is the right thing to do. But I also think that we need to take action on this issue and do it before it's too late. As you can see, user groups tend to breed more entitlement about their right to use the space the longer they go on. And I, for one, am somebody who spends a lot of time in Castle Valley, where there is massive pressure on the airspace and the sound space from base jumpers and helicopters and climbers and rescues and slackliners. And it's all happening out there all the time. And so it might be at a level that people can stand right now, but I don't think it will be for long. Like, we've seen the impact that social media has on this, and all be making it look really cool. It makes it explode, and I think we need to take action before we are seeing problems like exist in Sedona or other places. So Kevin, thank you for bringing this forward and working with folks on this. And I know that it's confusing, because it's airspace, and we don't have a lot of regulatory pathways. And this is, this is one of our only options for actually addressing this concern. So I am supportive of moving forward and trying to figure this out. And I think our solution should involve limiting some people's recreational freedom.
So one small way of moving forward is just to write a letter to the BLM, you know, informing, you know, hey, we're thinking about doing something like this, and we really hope that instead, you know, you guys can start a planning process. And, you know, just say that, you know, we're very dissatisfied with the current situation. That's a letter that could be drafted and approved, you know, the next meeting or something. And then just keep the actual ordinance on hold, because I don't think it's urgent that it, you know, we need to make sure that BLM understands the law the same way we do before moving forward with this. So that might be, you know, one way to keep up the momentum. And I think it's going to be fresh in their minds because of all the publicity that, you know, that this meeting, you know, this item has gotten. So it's, I think that can be used to our benefit to get the BLM to engage with this, especially people in the state office and people who make the budgeting decisions.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of postponing. I've read through many, many, many comments over the last couple of days, and quite a few things stuck out to me and things that I'd never considered. For example, the gentleman who spoke about balloons, I, that was the first time I saw something about that. That's a good point. Anyway.
And I should clarify, the way aircraft is defined in the year is motorized, so it does not apply to balloons.
Ah, okay, thanks. Anyway, I think postponing this and talking to more people and figuring out a different path forward or better path forward or another path forward is, makes sense to me right now.
You know, I do want to postpone this. I'll make a motion after my comment. But I think it's important as commissioners that we look ahead and try to see where issues are going to arise and become a severe problem and become something where we're hearing huge amounts of concern and huge amounts. And it's, the writing's on the wall. We're already hearing comments. We're getting, you know, people stop me in the street, you know, saying, I'm having so much trouble, da, 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 because of the noise that happens with certain things that go over. So I do think it's important that we move forward and we act, be proactive. But I think we've learned a lot. I think the intention, you know, the misinformation, that we were trying to control airspace was certainly not our intent. And so with that, I would like to make a motion that we postpone Item Six, the Approval of Ordinance Amending Title Seventeen of the Grand County General Ordinance. I would move to postpone that, and at the beginning of the year, start working with different user groups to to address this upcoming problem. This problem is going to get worse.
Thanks, Mary.
Is that, I mean, if we, is discussion allowed? Because there were a few more things I wanted to say.
A motion on the floor, then discussion.
Right. I'd take a second.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Mary and a second by Trish, and discussion.
I did, I know it's frustrating, you know, I've been frustrated giving public comments, and, you know, people just stand up there and say, thank you for your comment, and you don't get a response. So there were quite a lot of comments. We can't respond to all of them, but I had jotted down during the comments a few of them. So I, I think, as Mary points out, there was some misunderstanding, you know, misunderstandings of what exactly this would do. But I think there's also some real disagreements. I think misunderstandings of what exactly this would do. But I, I think there's also some, some real disagreements about my management of public lands and, you know, issues that need to be debated. Um.
Skip, skip to Kevin for one sec. Uh, there's a conversation in the back. If I would please ask if, uh, if you guys could converse in the hall. Thank you.
Okay. So just going through my list, I, you know, balloons, not, not covered. Um, and I don't think there's any desire to do that. Um, same thing goes for, you know, parachutes that don't have a motor. Someone brought that up. Um, she would be brought up, um, you know, issue at, at the airport, um, which I, I think is a, you know, a very important issue and, and you know, one of the reasons we need to, to think about this more. Um, let's see. There was a few people spoke about, is it an issue of takeoff and landings versus flight? Um, I think most of the issue is during flight, but that's not something we can regulate directly. So the, the intent, I think of, and this is true for a lot of the zoning we do, is, um, you know, we try to locate things so that anticipated impacts, you know, nearby are, are, are minimized. So because, you know, the only tool in our toolbox and also the only tool in the BLM's toolbox is to regulate takeoff and landings that it's being done, but it, you know, in a way to influence where people are flying. Um, it was one, it was a comment about, um, you know, all, you know, there's lots of valid ways of recreating public lands, therefore we should all share the same trails. But that's, that's not typically the, the approach that, you know, BLM takes in Grand County or larger. We, we have separate trail systems for bicycles and motorcycles and off-road vehicles. If, yeah, low use, use levels, it can, you can work, but I, I think it's sort of a general principle as use increases, you know, the, the need for regulation also increases. And I think that's what's happening now with, you know, especially with motorized, um, with helicopters and motorized paragliders. So if, you know, when there's very few of them around, we don't really need those, you know, we don't need those steeping rules, but, um, is eventually that changes. Um, and I think that's about the, the end of my list.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, any other discussion?
Just, uh, in terms of the motion that's on the table, um, there was the idea of submitting a letter instead. And I won, sorry, I got frogged. Uh, I wonder if that's, um, uh, or more pertinent direction to go and action to take. And rather than postponing this and bringing an amendment back up, if we just want to start with the, uh, letter.
I, I, I think that, I mean, we don't even need a motion for that, but because I, I think the letter, you know, needs to be drafted and reviewed before we pass it. But I, I think it's, you know, I, I think postponing this is we're planning for this same gen item to come up again. Um, I, I think it might eventually, but rather than make that the near term, just say that, you know, just if, if, if it, there's enough agreement that the ne- the next step perhaps at the next meeting is to write a letter to BLM asking them to, um, you know, to, to work on this issue. So.
I think that that's a good step, but I also might encourage folks to think about, I mean, this idea of at least identifying smaller geographic areas where we just implement this simple ordinance.
Hmm, yeah.
Might.
Okay, but that, that could be discussed in the future. I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just, I, I want, you know, I don't want to lose momentum. And I just, you know, I think, I think something we should definitely do is try one, one more time to get the BLM started on this because I, I think this is the type of decision that, you know, ideally the, the BLM would make. You know, I think, you know, this county ordinance is kind of a, a just, you know, something we would do if, if we fail to convince the BLM. And so another letter. And I think now that the timing is very good for such a letter. Um, and then after, after that, we can discuss next steps at some future meeting.
So you're proposing to write a letter, uh, asking the BLM to take a stand, basically, or?
Yeah, and we could, we could put that letter on the agenda for the next meeting and just to do something. Yeah, to bas- basically, you know, make some decisions. Don't just be silent.
Right.
Yeah. And we, and we've asked them many times in the past informally, but I, I think getting it in writing and doing it in the in this, you know, context, it might, they, they might listen, you know, more than previously.
I would say, um, I do believe that most users are not over the top. I think that there's a, a social network that keeps the majority of the use responsible. And I can appreciate that now. And I think that this is an effort for, like Kevin was saying, planning for thirty years down the road. And as, uh, more people come and, and, um, more people get into these things, that, uh, it would be nice to have some guidelines in place. Um, I do believe there are appropriate places in Grand County for backcountry landings. Um, and so I am torn and after this evening, I don't necessarily, uh, think that even bringing the amendment back up without engaging with other stakeholders more first, um, is the next plan. So.
I, I agree.
So I don't even need to have it postponed into the future for myself, but, um, I do want to keep momentum and engage with folks who are much more familiar and, and craft a way that, um, uh, we can target areas where things are appropriate and target areas where things are more sacred, for lack of a better term.
Okay. So my, my understanding then is ye- yes to a letter and also people are in favor of more discussions and
If, if my vote against the motion to propose or to postpone, that's why.
Okay.
Uh,
Cause you might want to take a stand.
And I don't need this, this agenda item as presented.
Right.
I don't need it on the docket again. That's all I'm saying.
I, I, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, I, I think we've allied some other steps and, um, and, and, yeah, so I.
So it could just fail and?
So we're not, I mean, I, I, I don't know, and we can just not act on something like no one makes a motion, you know, we just, we've added discussion. No one makes a motion, then it, it just dies. And there's no commitment to bring it back in any particular.
Well, if you postpone, there's no commitment. You've just postponed indefinitely and that is indefinitely. You know, and hopefully we wouldn't have to ever bring it back. Hopefully the, you know, the agency that's in charge of that area, you know, starts to look at the future impacts, which is going to be big.
We hope, I, I still give it less than fifty percent odds, but I think it's definitely worth a, worth a try to get them. Maybe I'll, I'm gonna start something soon.
Right.
Start, start a, a planning process.
Well, we do have a motion to postpone on the table. Um, and a second. So unless there's further discussion, we should, uh, vote on the motion. So all in favor of the motion to postpone this item to the future?
Aye.
And Josie?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, that was I.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. All those, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed. All right. The motion passes five to two with Commissioners Clapper and Walker in opposition.
And I would like to note it in the minutes that they oppose the motion because they don't want it to come back. That they think there's better ways to go forward.
Was that, not, not come back in this, this exact?
Not yet, not to come back in this.
Hopefully we are going to continue to engage with this.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll move on to the next item. Um, uh, the next item is uh, ratify a letter regarding Utah Black Bear Management Plan and the twenty twenty-three recommendations. And I believe Attorney Sloan has left.
I'm gonna do it.
So, okay, so, uh, Commissioner Hadeen will present. Thanks, Trish.
Okay. So I'll just try to provide some very quick background. Um, I met with Christina, Chris Wood, who's the Regional Director for the Division of Wildlife, um, Adam Wallerstein, our, our Conservation Officer, and Dustin Mitchell, who is Wildlife Biologist for this region. Um, I want to say this was in the spring. She had just, um, we had a bear case that was back in two thousand and seventeen. Pretty awful case where the individual was legally pursuing bears with a pursuit permit. Um, but at one point ran the bear to basically exhaustion, put the bear in the dog box and was re-releasing the bear to continue to, to train his hounds. Um, he was, he was, we, he was charged finally with two misdemeanors, but was acquitted on the felony. And you know, our council was fairly discouraged by that. So we met with the division to see where, what we could do to tighten up their rule. Um, they were currently in the process of going through what's called their management plan review, and they do this with all species. Um, that committee met and unfortunately not many changes were made to the rule. So at that point, um, Christina prompted this letter to the division. And I actually have now spoken, so the division has a really strong public process where when management plans come up, it goes to public process regionally, um, public input is taken. Then that information from the, what's called the RAC, the Regional Advisory Council, is taken to the State Wildlife Board and the State Wildlife Board finally makes final, um, final rule. That being said, we're, we are just submitting this letter as public comment. Um, but I did directly talk to both the Regional Chair, um, yesterday for an hour, Sunday for an hour. And I talked to the Wildlife Chair today for probably another hour. And he thought the letter was very well written. Um, he, these are things that they have attempted to put into place in the past. Um, there is a very strong contingency within our state of houndsmen. And I do want to state that, and you, maybe you're not going to like this, but I actually do support the use of hounds in wildlife management because I think in certain specific cases, they are, um, they are a, a, a positive point of managing wildlife. But these types of cases cannot, this is not good. And, and it was really the verbiage that allowed this individual to fall through the cracks. So what we're proposing is some stronger verbiage as, as what is considered at bay. In this specific case, that bear was clearly at bay, which what that usually means is the bear is treed or they're ledged out, they're in a situation where they're at bay. Um, this individual, this trainer did not pull the dogs off. Um, repeated pursuits is not allowed. So where you're continued to allow to run those dogs. Um, we're asking for a limited, limit of hounds. And this is, I, I was on the rack for a long time and we many, many times debated limiting the amount of hounds that somebody could run. We tried to pull it back to eight and it was, it stayed at sixteen. And so we are asking to pull it back to eight. There's different seasons and how many hounds you can run. And two of the seasons are eight anyway. So I just think it would provide consistency and rule. Eliminating fall pursuits altogether. And that's a time when bears are putting on fat for the winter. One, but two, it's just the highest amount of user conflict that you're going to find in the mountains. And I will say as a, as an archer, I have more than once been on elk and had bears run through my hunt. And so I actually think that most sportsmen would actually support this change in rule. And this, I will state, this has been eliminated to eliminate non-resident pursuits altogether. The reality is this individual was from Florida. What happens is you get a lot of houndsmen coming from states that they're not allowed to run bears. They can run raccoons, but they can't run bears. And so they're coming to our state to run bears, for example, or lions. And the reality is we have eliminated non-resident pursuits. This individual was simply with a resident. And so again, it's just a verbiage thing that feasibly could be cleaned up. Um, so hopefully the division will take our recommendations. I will go to the RAC meeting tomorrow night. And then the RAC recommendations will go to the state. But again, I've already, I've actually submitted some comments just to the board members in general. So we'll see where it goes. But I think it's, it's a matter of cleaning up some verbiage. And then we'll be able to prosecute those bad apples. In this case, you know, he got a couple slaps on the hand and that was it. And it was not acceptable. So any questions or?
Sarah?
I make a motion.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, I move to approve ratification of the letter regarding Utah Black Bear Management Plan and the twenty twenty-three recommendation.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by, uh, Sarah and a second by Mary. Uh, discussion. I want to thank Trish very much for, for bringing the issue up. And also Attorney Sloan, I think you worked with Christina.
Yeah, she, she drafted the letter. She did a great job and, and we had some great feedback from other individuals and um, Garrish is raising his hand. And I don't know, Garrish was a part of the rack, but I don't, I know, I, I, yeah, anyways, I don't want to fall out of play here. So.
If, if Garrish was involved in this, I'd be willing to hear.
He was, he's been a part of the rack, um, in the past as a non-consumptive rep. So if you're okay with him, we get a statement.
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with that. Garrish, you want to speak?
Yeah, thanks a lot, guys. Um, I, uh, the, the bear guidelines that the Division of Wildlife and the Wildlife Board put out has a, a section in it that talks about, uh, conflicts with other recreation. And like, uh, typically, I think the Wildlife Board and the consumptive, the hunters on the rack are only considering the, the, uh, impacts to other hunters, which they consider recreationists. And when I was on the rack, a couple of times I uh, suggested that, uh, the Southeast Region send a recommendation to the Wildlife Board to eliminate, um, hounding or hunting with dogs, hunting with hounds in La Salle's altogether because of the recreational uh, conflicts. And I never got any much support at all for that idea. But things have really changed in the La Salle's. As you know, there are so many more people up there. And to try to share a nice hiking experience or bike riding experience or whatever, whatever the other types of recreation are with all these houndsmen driving up and down the road, chasing their dogs who are chasing the bears, it's really a conflict. And I, so my suggestion would be to modify the letter to request that the La Salle unit be, uh, designated close to hunting with hounds. I really appreciate the work that's gone into, into this letter. I think it's a step in the right direction. My experience with the Wildlife Board is that they are going to listen to other people rather than Grand County, but I really appreciate you working on this letter and getting it there.
Thanks, Garrish. Got it.
Uh,
Trish, go ahead.
I, I will state that I've, I had those discussions about the La Salle's and I don't think we're going to find much purchase on that.
Right.
But I think the letter that we've written will go a long ways because I, I don't, you know, it's not talking about complete removal. Um, I would recommend Garrish that tomorrow's the RAC meeting. And so I would recommend that you go and, and make that recommendation. Um, I don't think we would find much purchase by throwing that in there. And I actually, I think it might, might hurt our letter a little bit.
I, I, I trust you.
And as, as a letter already been sent, I mean, we're.
Our letters, we're ratified. Yeah, we've already got it.
I'd, I'd also, I'd also bring up that, uh, this was a news story on KSL. I think it was like a week and a half ago or so.
Yeah.
And they did post some of the videos on their, on the webs, on the KSL news site. And I, I can't stomach animal cruelty at all. I, I, it's painful. And, and I did watch some of the videos and they're, it's, it's, it's horrifying.
Yes. The goal is to strengthen that rule to the point where those people aren't going to get away with it.
Yeah. So, yeah, thanks again for your work on this. Uh, any other discussion? Mary?
I'll just follow with yours. I avoided looking at the, when uh, Mallory said she had the videos earlier in the year. I didn't look at them, but I felt I should if we were writing this letter and anyone thinks we're overreacting and trying to out, you know, do any, out, you know, overreach, I really highly recommend you look at those videos. They are disturbing to say the least. I mean, sixteen dogs circling this bear that's passed out from exhaustion, yanking at, oh, it was just, it was horrendous. I, I, it just brought tears to my eyes. And I, I would like, I'm glad we're doing something. I hope they listen.
I, I hope they take our recommendations as well, very much. Um, all right. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of, um, ratifying the letter?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, and our, the last, uh, item on our uh, regular agenda, uh, cooperative agreement between Utah State University Extension and Grand County. Uh, Quinn is doing this one. So we had this on the agenda last year. It's a.
So we had this on the agenda last year. It's a annual agreement that we do every year, and we had to get the numbers updated. And we got the numbers from Catherine. They've been inserted. I, my understanding is that Chris has put them in the budget. So this is good to go.
Thanks, Quinn.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Sarah.
I move to approve the cooperative agreement between Utah State University Extension and Grand County pending approval of twenty twenty-three budget.
I'll second. All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on this? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
I.
And the motion passes uh unanimously. We are on to our consent agenda, um, approval of consent items. Uh, the first one of those is ratification of strong and hanny retainer agreement and waiver for Grant County Sheriff's Office Policy and Training Review. Uh, ratification of the Woody's Tavern Letter of Support. Uh, board appointment to the Canyonland Special Healthcare Service District and the annual Google Workspace Renewal.
Move to accept.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll second.
All right, motion by uh Mary to approve the consent agenda, second by Sarah. Discussion on any other consent agenda items. Devin?
Uh, it's uh just a broader sort of thing. Um, I think it might be nice, I I think it's fine tonight, but in the future to have uh district appointments uh as an agenda item rather than a consent.
Thanks, Evan.
So did we discuss that in the past when there was only only one candidate?
Yeah, if there was only one candidate.
Yeah, if there, if there's more than one candidate, put it on the regular agenda, is what we finally.
And one candidate with a recommendation from that particular board.
Thanks for that explanation.
All right, um, motion on the table. Uh, all those in favor of uh approving the consent agenda, raise your hand.
I.
All right, and the motion passes uh six to nothing with Commissioner Hadeen uh absent. Um, all right, that's the end of our action items. We're on to public hearings. Um, our first public hearing is uh the public hearing on petition to vacate existing western portions of Willow Springs and Dalton Wells Roads, County B Roads located within the Utah Raptor State Park Campground. And that is Bill Jackson presenting is Bill on Zoom. Okay, you got this, uh, Quinn?
Yeah, so these are the roads within the new Utah Raptor State Park, so we're just vacating them so that they become part of the park.
Great.
And we've received zero public.
And there is, there is a map in our uh in the agenda that shows you those roads, and it looks like they're just the very beginning part of uh Willow Springs and Dalton Wells Roads that that go for, I don't know, a couple hundred yards from the highway into the park.
Yeah, and we have this on a prior agenda item and the rules with vacating the road are different, so we've actually had this in the paper for quite a few weeks.
Okay.
And so now we're, we had a notice of public hearing for several weeks. Now we're opening the public hearing. But in the time that it's been in the paper, we've received no comments, so let's see, please.
Okay. Is, hey, I will uh open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone in the in the chambers who'd like to make a comment? Dan?
Yeah, Kent, just.
Uh, please come forward.
Sure.
Dan, Kent, thanks for, thanks, Grant County, for actually vacating claims on unnecessary roads.
Thank you.
Uh, any any other comments on this public hearing right now? Anyone on Zoom? And this is just comments on this particular public hearing. All right, the public hearing will remain open uh for ten days, I believe, until, is it? It's uh right. I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, it, yeah, that, absolutely, I was thinking of something else. Public hearing will remain open until five P M uh next Wednesday, which is the fourteenth, I believe.
And I, Dan, for your info, we're giving away the rights so the state can have it and build more roads.
There you go. Yes, the fourteen, five P M.
Right, okay, the public hearing will remain open until five P M, the fourteenth comments can be made at commission uh or online. All right, I will move to our next public hearing. Uh, public hearing to solicit comments on the amended twenty twenty-two budget, the tentative twenty twenty-three budget, and a proposed eight point seven percent cost of living adjustment, the COLA for all elected officials. Uh, Chris Baird, Strategic Development Director, um, and is Chris on Zoom still? It looks like he is. Yeah, I got you, Chris. I see your screen. Thank you.
All right, so I just brought up the uh agenda summary, which I'm gonna read because we kind of got it in the pack a little late. So this is for the proposed twenty twenty-two budget amendment, which is part of this public hearing. Um, we've got in the packet, there's a fund level summary of of the proposed amendment, so you can see how each fund uh is being changed in in general. Then there's also, of course, the detail um and uh budget in there as well. Uh, the budget amendments are predominantly based on revised revenue and expenditure projections. You know, a notable exception is the increase in Fund Twenty-three, which was the result of the uh the former budget amendments that we've already approved. Um, the general funds total revenue projection uh is down only about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand uh bit relative to the initial uh budgeted revenue amounts, um, which were predicted on zero percent growth relative to twenty twenty-one. Uh, twenty twenty-one was an outlier year with unusually high revenue. Uh, the projected total sales taxes combined in twenty twenty-two. Uh, if they come out the way I'm thinking they're going to, will be about ninety-seven percent relative to twenty twenty-one and a hundred and ten percent relative to long-term trends. Uh, at this point, it's estimated it will be able to contribute approximately two point six million to the Capital Projects Fund at the end of the year. Uh, this largely due to unspent monies in the budget, which happens every year, mostly due to uh uh not having all of our positions filled that we budget for. Then moving on to the tentative twenty twenty-three budget, this is the um the result of the Budget Advisory Board's work and then the the workshops that we, a couple workshops we had with the commission as well. Uh, revenue projections for twenty twenty-three again are based on zero percent growth relative to how we're projecting to close this year. Uh, this is a fiscally conservative estimate designed to buffer against any economic stagnation resulting from recession-like forces that may affect Grant County. So uh being kind of careful with regard to revenue. If we do see revenue increase uh next year, you know, we'll always have the uh option to bring that money into the budget with the budget amendment uh if we wanted to. Um, we're also uh making a contribution to stormwater again at four hundred thousand to bring the uh total stormwater budget up to a little over three million. Uh, this includes Jackson Street Phase Two, uh N R C S uh project on Pat Creek and um the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities grant we got through FEMA, all stormwater related. Uh, Capital Projects Budget entails approximately nine hundred and forty-two thousand for building and equipment needs, uh about three and a half million for office space purchases, renovation and construction. And then just a big number, twelve million i- in the instance that we may sell some property, some surplus real estate. And so uh in the packet also is a summary of all the position, employee position changes or amendments uh that were approved in the workshops. Uh, s- state law requires that we also hold a public hearing on any adjustment to elected official salaries, so this public hearing is also gonna cover that statutory requirement. Uh, right now, the budget entails an eight point seven percent cost of living adjustment for all employees in the county, including all elected officials. Uh, the total projected cost of the COLA uh across the entire county is about one point three three million. A breakdown um on specific elected officials is in the packet for that, for those that are interested in seeing that specifically. The eight point seven percent figure is high, but it's based on the Social Security Supplemental Security Income Benefits Adjustment that happened recently. So that covers it with the uh the summary. I'm happy to go into more detail if anybody has any questions for me on the commission or the public. But uh this is the public hearing. We are going to uh accept comment through next Wednesday and then uh uh schedule action on December twentieth. We do have the option to continue to amend the budget all the way up to the point where we uh finally approve it. So there's still a little bit of time to make adjustments if need be, and I will have to make, you know, a ma- a small adjustment relative to the uh C N H A agreement for the M I C that we did, you know, but that's not a big deal, just a minor amendment, and there may be others. Um, I usually will continue to amend the twenty twenty-two budget as we go as I get more information on revenue and expense. So I would expect the proposed amended budget to change a bit and possibly the twenty twenty-three tentative budget too, if I uh get any last minute uh issues pop up. That's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Any uh commissioners have a question for for Chris or comment on the budget? I will, I will say thank you so much for all the work you've done on the budget, Chris. I know it's been extremely consuming uh for the last couple months and um nice, nice to get there.
Yeah. My cleanest one yet.
Great. You're, what what is this, you're six, seven?
Yeah. Yeah, I I I may have said it at some other point this this year, but I I do think Grant County has a pretty open and transparent budgeting process um compared to other other counties I've observed. Um, you know, not many members of public want to listen, you know, line by line as departments, but just you know, all of that's, all of it's public. It's some, is someone on uh Zoom? Go ahead, anyway, I I just, I wanted to compliment Chris on on running this process and also I think helping, you know, devise the process. I think it works, works well, so.
All right, yeah. Thank you, Mary.
Yes, uh, both Kevin and I went to so many of those meetings and you know, it's probably one of the most important job we do all year is figure out how we're gonna spend the money because where the money goes is where your interest goes and, you know, that's what where your energy's going. I mean, not interest, but your energy and so. And, you know, from when I started uh as a commissioner and now the budget process has improved dramatically, dramatically and I, Kevin, were you there? Evan, were you there during the tough ones? You, yeah, you were.
Stuck paper like this big.
Oh, gosh. He never, oh, it was, it wa- it was nightmarish, wasn't it? So thank you. I don't know if Chris can hear it, but Chris has really, really brought that, and I will say it was Curtis Wells who came up with the idea of the Budget Advisory Board. And I am very thankful that he did that.
All right, thank you. Then I will now uh open this public hearing uh to solicit comments. Is there anyone in the chambers here who would like to comment on the uh twenty twenty uh on on the budget items that we discussed? All right, anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing none, I'll leave this uh public hearing open until uh next Wednesday, the fourteenth at five P M. Uh, comments can be sent to our commission email. And uh this item will be uh voted on at the December twentieth meeting. Thank you. Um, there's one more. There's one more public hearing uh on our agenda to solicit comments on the amended uh twenty twenty-two budget and the tentative twenty twenty-three budgets for Thompson Springs Special Service District or Special Service Fire District. Chris, I believe you said we would have to uh do that at our next meeting when we do the Thompson uh meeting, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, there are just a miscommunication. I got on the wrong agenda and so um we'll hold the budget hearing on the twentieth for it, and then we can vote on it to Thompson. Fire doesn't actually have the same policy that we have uh with regard to waiting on public hearings, and I don't think there's any contention with that budget anyway, so. Um, I'll present that public hearing on the twentieth, and then y'all can vote on it on the twentieth. Uh, I did notice it in the newspaper that it was gonna be tonight, so uh it's worth mentioning why we're not doing it tonight. It's just a little bit of a mix-up, but we'll get it done on the twentieth.
Okay, thank you. So if anyone is uh tuning in to make comment on that Thompson uh budget, you can do so uh on the twentieth. Thank you. Um, and that uh brings our agenda to a close. Uh, I will adjourn this uh regular Grant County Commission meeting uh December sixth. Thanks, everybody.
Seven forty-three.